Good evening, Carver, and ladies and gentlemen of the audience. We are meeting in room number one at the Carver Town Hall. It is May 29, 2024, and it is 7:00 PM by the clock in this room. First, we have the approval of meeting minutes from our last meeting, which was May 8, 2024. And has everybody received a copy of those draft minutes?
Yes.
And has everyone had an opportunity to review those minutes?
Yes.
Does anyone wish to make any changes, amendments, or modifications to those minutes?
No.
Is there any discussion that anybody would like to have with regard to those minutes?
No.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Those meeting minutes are accepted as written. First matter on our docket for tonight is a continued case, ladies and gentlemen. This is the third time in on case number 125-19-2-R. And the petitioner is Jeffrey Benoit. And I see both Mr. Benoit and counsel. Attorney Hale, would you approach the microphone? And get comfortable while I read the rest of this public notice. These folks are seeking a special permit pursuant to Sections 2250, 5221, and 5300, and Sections following of the Carver zoning bylaw, so as to reconstruct a single-family residence on a pre-existing, nonconforming lot for property located at 48 Cranberry Road in Carver. This is to be found at Assessor's Map 125, Lot 19-0-R, in a residential agricultural district. For the record, I have recused myself on this case, as I have a relationship with one of the parties. So to avoid an appearance of a conflict of interest, I have decided to turn the chair over for this particular case to the vice chair, who is more than capable, Ms. Mello, sitting to my right. Ms. Mello.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As Mr. Chairman stated, the case was submitted as a special permit. There was discussion at the last meeting about the lot losing its grandfathering under the abandonment law 2255. Do you agree that, at this point, you would like to move forward with this case as a variance versus a special permit?
Well, that's kind of a tough call, because we actually have photographs that show they had started to tear it down, and it does show that there had been the actual house there, where I think you showed us pictures, but it was from the road. And it was covered by trees at that point, so it was impossible to see the wood. I certainly think that we fall within the measure of a special permit, but let's face it, I'd rather have a variance any day of the week versus a special permit. So why don't we go forward on that basis?
Okay. As you know, in order to grant variances under Mass. Law Chapter 4810, 40A, Section 10, the onus is to show that there are circumstances relating to soil conditions, shape, or topography of the land or structures, and that especially affecting such land or structures, but not generally affecting the zoning district in which this is located. Okay? Could you please outline the variances you will need in order to build the proposed lot, and then get into the unique circumstances of this lot, which would support your case?
I'm sorry, if you'd just repeat that first question?
So first, I would like you to lay out the variances you are applying for. Okay? And then I would like you to talk about why those variances are unique to this lot.
Well, obviously, we're seeking the variance at this point in time. Every, I think, we had the site, sites on Saturday, November, I mean, May the 11th and 9th. I think you can tell just from seeing it, it's quite a unique lot. And so the foundation is ready to be built upon, and therefore, what we'd be doing would be seeking a variance, so that my client could then go ahead and get a building permit to erect the structure. In the special permit documents that we gave you the last time, or the two times before, we showed you the actual house that is to be built on. I mean, this, the uniqueness part of this is, the lot itself, and if you, I handed these out today, I'm sorry I didn't get these in earlier to the board, but I'm recovering, or have recovered from COVID. So on the second page, I have the lot depiction that I gave out to the board members at the site view. What happens is, is that the very, very far end, next to Mile Stand is Drive, that's where the well is. On the opposite end, the, and that's where the Title V system is, it's already in place, and this is the well, and the well is drawing. So given that, the only position, reasonably, reasonable position, to have the house in this lot would be where that foundation is. And if you look at that, I mean, you have a one setback, and the back setback of 23 feet, and you have the setback to the road of 13.4 feet. Zoning bylaws for RRA clearly state that for those two dimensions should be a minimum of 50 feet.
So what are you looking for? For as far as variances? You need a back variance, backlot variance?
We need, yeah.
Of how much?
We need a backlog, the backlot variance of the 23 feet, but also need the front lot of 13.4 feet. I don't think we have any problems at all with the side lots, which would otherwise be a...
I'll stop you there. Wait a second. The 13 is what you have.
Yeah.
All right? So for the back, you need 50 minus 23, which is 27. You need 27 feet. And then on the other side, you need about 37 and a half feet.
So that would be basically what we're seeking, to vary, so that we could actually, and I would think that we'd also need the variance as far as the square footage is concerned, which is just under an acre, and of course, the minimum here is 60,000 for RRA.
And how does the size of the lot qualify for a variance? Under Chapter 40A, Section 10, how do you get there? How do we say it's okay to grant you 37,000 feet, square foot variance?
Well, because it's still, I mean, there's no reason why this should not be a build of a lot, and it's undersized, and so obviously, there's a, well, I mean, what we have here is the, we're not doing any harm at all to the neighborhood itself. In fact, I mean, looking at the site view, what that lot looks like, it's a horror show.
But if we grant you 33,000 square foot variance on a lot, everybody in town who has an undersized Form A lot is going to come here and say, "You gave him a variance, why can't I have one?" We've never done it before. The only time we have ever, and I did a lot of investigation on this, the only time we ever allowed an undersized lot to have a variance was if it was on an approved subdivision and a registered lot in that subdivision. And that is why, the last meeting, I asked you to please look up the previous case. The lot was not 60,000 square feet. It was abandoned. It did fall under granting a variance, because the lot was on an approved subdivision. This lot is not.
Well, if you're not, if it sounds to me like the board would be unwilling to grant that variance as far as lot size is concerned, and therefore, I don't see where variance is going to carry, so why don't we go back to the special permit?
I asked you before we started the meeting how you wanted to proceed. You agreed that it had lost its grandfathering, and that you wanted to proceed under a variance. You haven't made, in my estimation, one argument for shape, size, topography.
We certainly have one shape.
Just because it's an odd shape doesn't mean you should be granted a variance. And you need to get a variance for each area where it does not conform. And the hurdle for size, I don't know how we're going to get over that. Not only that, from my point of view, 13 feet from a roadway that has a curve right before the house, because I did go down there, I was there at 9:30, so I did walk the land. I don't think the safety office in town would sign off on that.
That's very difficult with everything that's been said about that shape, with it being that close to the road, and also, how many more people are going to follow and say, "If you gave a variance for that amount of square footage," then you open up Pandora's Box.
I think they've also, from what I was able to find out, I mean, we've never granted a variance for that little frontage. I mean, I think the most we've gone is somewhere around 15 feet. So in other words, to grant 15 feet, that means they still had, you know, 35 feet of frontage to the road. So, I mean, I'm feeling the same way as everybody else up here. The lot is almost half again as small as the lot that's next to it. So you've got a problem with square footage. I mean, to my way of thinking, your best option at this point, now, I was told that someone owns that land behind where the structure is going to be built. A 64-foot by 205-foot section of land from your butter would give you an additional 13,120 square feet. And at that point, I stand corrected if I'm wrong on here, but if you were able to purchase that land, you could then move the house, you could have the setback that you want, and I don't think you'd even need to come before us if the lot was the right size.
If the lot's the right size.
Yeah.
Yep.
But to me, you've got two big hurdles. The lot is really undersized, it's not just a little bit undersized, it's really undersized, and the frontage that you've got, I mean, even moving it, it's still not going to give you anywhere near the frontage and room in the back that you need in order to do that.
And you won't consider going back to the special permit?
I go back to the first discussion we had at the first meeting. The structure has been dilapidated and abandoned for many years, which means it lost its The testimony at the last meeting was that it had been abandoned for many years.
The testimony...
At the last meeting, you, Mr. Piper came in and said it was falling in on itself. There was a long, there's a large file on this lot, that the structure has been noted as a shed, a blockhouse. And if you, here's a case, which you can read. It's very similar, and you know, like every case, they're similar, but not the same. Special permit to rebuild, the rebuild was not done. There was a special permit on this lot to rebuild in 1989. There was another special permit in 2001. It was a two-year special permit. In 2003, in the file downstairs, it is noted that the building was not rebuilt, they were supposed to raise the foundation and begin rebuilding, and it is noted that they went out and inspected it, and they felt that it couldn't be done, because it would fall in on itself. That was in 2003. As I showed you with the pictures that we presented at the last meeting, it does not appear to me that there was any structure there in 2019.
Well, I understand with that picture, that was taken from the aspect of the roadway, and it was covered with trees. We do have a picture that shows that there wasn't part of a structure there, but I understand your argument.
It's abandoned.
You're going to say it was abandoned, so.
Abandoned.
I'll tell you what, why don't we just withdraw the application for special permit and a variance? Then strike my, then strike my withdrawal. Go ahead and vote.
Okay.
Preserve our rights.
Any other testimony? Do I hear a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, do I hear a motion to approve the request for variances, as applied for by Mr. Benoit on 48 Cranberry Road? Do I hear a motion to deny the variances, as applied for by Mr. Benoit on 48 Cranberry Road?
Motion to deny?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, Ms. Mello, you handled that so well. Maybe I should let you handle the rest of the meeting.
I'm good.
Okay. We're going to move on to the new business tonight, and try to get through as much of this as possible. We have three significant cases, the first one of which on our agenda is brought by the Plymouth, the Plymouth Elks Lodge, number 1476, by Brackett Engineering, requesting a special permit pursuant to Sections 2230, 5221, and 5300, and Sections following of the Carver zoning bylaw. Anybody here from Plymouth Elks and, and Brackett Engineering, right?
Yes.
Very good. This is for property located at 169 South Meadow Road, Assessor's Map 137-7-0-E, to operate a private establishment with the sale or consumption of alcoholic beverages in the airport district. So I see that we're going to have some visual aids tonight in connection with this particular application. Who is it that would like to speak on its behalf?
Robert, from Brackett Engineering.
All right. So Robert, for the record, if you could identify yourself, first and last name, and your professional address, please.
Absolutely. My name is Robert DeWar, with Brackett Engineering, at 49 Herring Pond Road in Buzzards Bay, here representing the Plymouth Elks Lodge tonight.
Okay. So the first thing I want to tell you is to move the microphone closer to you, because you have a low voice.
Certainly.
That's a little better. And why don't you tell us, please, and the people here, and the folks watching at home, what's behind all this and what you would like to do?
Sure. So we have a project here in the airport district, is actually just on the property line of Plymouth and Carver. It is a leased area located on the airport property, and the Plymouth Elks Lodge is proposing to construct a new lodge house for the organization. It's a 72-seat house, it would, as a private club, but also serves as a function hall that can be rented. And so it's, let's just see here, as stated, we're on South Meadow Road, this is airport property, and they are leasing this area on the property here, this being the town line. So right now, it is vacant land, unused, it's been cleared, and there's been, you know, fill added over the years, but that's it. Across the street, we have the development here, we have the Village Links Golf Course just up the road in Plymouth, and as you head down into Carver, you get into a more residential neighborhood.
Okay. Could you put that on your easel, please, and turn it in the direction of the public who is observing tonight?
So again, we have a 72-seat structure here. It's serviced by adequate parking. We have been approved via the planning board, and it has gone through site plan review. They approved with the condition that we do need a special permit this evening for the use, which is any club, private or public, to serve alcohol, granted by the ZBI tonight. So we do feel that we have satisfied all of the requirements for the special permits in terms of social, economic, and community needs. This is a charitable organization, they do provide quite a bit of donation and charitable work for the community. In addition, it does provide function hall and meeting space for the community to use. In terms of traffic flows and safety, including parking and loading, our site plan does show loading zones. We have significant parking for the site based upon the seating. This is just to allow for the functions, and allow any staff that may be hired for functions. The fire department has reviewed the plans, they are satisfied with the turning, and they access for the property, and the review engineer for the planning board had no concerns regarding vehicular flow and traffics. So in terms of the adequacy of utilities and public services, this, the property is serviced because we are on the airport property, we are tying into the Plymouth water service that runs along the property, so it's not, not on a well, but on Plymouth water. We're also tying into the Plymouth Airport Sewer System service there. We have, actually, since the application to this department, we have granted final approval and confirmation from the sewer department and the airport that the capacity is adequate for the project. In terms of neighborhood character and social structure, the building has been designed both to complement the other buildings in the area, as well as, and there's some back and forth with the planning board on this, provide some additional facade treatments to kind of make it a little more appealing to the, to the neighborhood, so it doesn't just look like another metal space building in the area. In addition, there's going to be quite a bit of landscaping and screening for the parking and for, in front of the building as well. And impacts on the natural environment, we have taken great care for the drainage considerations using low-impact drainage design, that's serviced by a couple of rain gardens with, and subsurface infiltration, so we're infiltrating all of the runoff impacted by any impervious areas on site. And again, we do have quite a bit of landscaping and green space that's going in on the site. And lastly, for any potential fiscal impact, including impact on town services, tax base, and employment, there is the, you know, the benefit of tax sales for the sale of alcohol. The development doesn't impact town services such as schools, there's no increase in students at the school. We're not really impacting any town services, other than potential fire services. Again, where all of our utilities are based on the Plymouth side and the airport. So we feel that we've met the burden of proof for the special permit, and we open up the board for any questions.
Thank you for that presentation. Board members, questions, comments, and discussion?
How often does the Elks meet? Is it a weekly meeting? Is it a monthly meeting? Is it...
Bimonthly.
Bimonthly?
Yes. Twice a month.
Have you investigated about getting a alcohol?
Excuse me?
An alcohol permit?
Yes.
Being able to serve alcohol?
Yes. Yes, I heard way back when we first started this process, I wanted to make sure that would be a possibility, and they said, "Yeah, you probably need a special permit," but it's, it's resolved correctly.
Anything further, Mr. Barrington, for now?
So this is just Plymouth Elks? Or do you invite other Elks clubs to come and meet, use the building?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. I'm just thinking along the lines of how much use this is going to be?
Like any other social club, it has its busy times, most of the time, not so much, weekends, certain nights, but not terribly busy, I wouldn't think.
Okay.
From history.
Okay. How much use as a function hall would you expect?
Uh, it's pretty small. A function hall, I think, is 50 seats, so it's only going to be for small, like a meeting room, or someone's, a small birthday party, or a baby shower.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Colton?
I don't have any questions.
Ms. Dahl? Need a moment?
Yeah.
Ms. Mello?
It's 50 feet off the road, I'm happy.
I have a few things. So you have yet to obtain a license to serve, is that true?
This is correct.
Okay. So anything that we do for you, obviously, would be subject to you folks obtaining the necessary licenses from the state and local authorities.
Correct.
What are going to be your hours of operation?
We really haven't set those yet, but in the past, it's been approximately 3:00 in the afternoon till 8:00 or 9:00.
We'll set them for you. What do you want?
Who will set them for us?
We will.
Oh.
You tell us what you want.
Oh. To start out with, I think that would be adequate, I mean, we're not...
Well, on the back end, you gave me two different times, so...
All right, so say 3:00 to 9:00.
3:00 to 9:00. Okay. Is this seven days a week? Are you going to be closed today?
Probably.
Are you going to open a little bit earlier, a little bit later, or close a little bit earlier or later?
On the weekends, I believe we opened at noon.
Okay. And then stay open until 9:00, right?
Yes, correct.
Even on weekends?
Yeah, that's what he said.
Just, we want to get it in, make sure we cover...
Okay. So why don't we, on the weekends, why wouldn't we go till, say, 11:00?
Okay. So open at noon, close at 11:00?
On the weekends, correct.
I know it takes a couple of extra hours to quench your thirst, so, especially on the weekend.
Right. Yeah, that might actually be for Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Okay. That was going to be what I was going to ask you next.
I have a question, based off of the hours.
Go.
Will there be, like, breakfast served? I know a lot of times, like, the Elks and Moose and all of these, they do breakfast, pancakes.
Right, yes, occasionally.
Is that something we need to take into consideration?
You don't have to be open.
Well, I've been at other... Well, I've been at other facilities-
It's just you have the ability.
Right, we have been at other facilities where we'll have a breakfast, but there is no alcohol sold until noon.
Okay, so I don't, I think I'm hearing you say you don't really need to be open for breakfast hours, right?
Correct.
Next. You had mentioned that the fire department was perfectly fine with this.
Correct, uh, correct.
I have a letter here in the file from the fire department. Dated February 20th of this year. Now, it's possible since February 20th, which is 90 days ago now, a little bit more, that this letter has addressed the issues that were raised therein. But have any of you, or either of you seen this letter dated February 20th, 2024, from the fire department?
I believe so, if it's the letter. That's their initial review, and they do have, they had a list of comments.
They have, on this letter that I'm looking at anyway, and I'm happy to show it to-
If you don't mind, I'm just going to pull up my email on my phone just to make sure that it's the one I'm thinking of.
It has five things listed, and it's, to our knowledge, we don't know if any one or all of these have yet been addressed. So out of an abundance of caution, whatever we do here tonight, I feel should be conditioned upon satisfactory review by public safety, especially with reference to the five specific issues that were raised by the fire department here in Carver by date of letter February 2024. Is that acceptable, gentlemen?
It is, yep.
Good. Did you find what you're looking for?
Yes, I have a response to those comments that was sent back to the planning board on May 5th from their initial February letter.
Okay, and were those addressed specifically by the fire department at that time, or do you not know?
Uh, they were, yep. And they, they were okay with the, we did get a confirmation response from them.
From who then?
Uh, from the fire department, correct, from Jesse Boyle.
And when was that? What date was that?
Uh, that was March 11th.
Okay, because on March 26th, you appeared before the planning board.
Correct.
And the planning board generated a letter slash decision. They do things a little bit differently over there than we do here. We're more, and this is no, casting no aspersion on the planning board, but we're a little bit more legal here. So I'm not quite sure how to characterize this, but it is a detailed letter that was drafted by the planner and signed off on by the planning board. You've seen a copy of that, have you, gentlemen?
Correct.
All right, and we would obviously want to make sure, like with the fire department, that our decision, if we grant your relief, is subject to the terms and provisions voted on by the planning board, because we don't want cross-reference, boards working across purposes, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Reasonable? And same thing with the health department. You mentioned that you had been in contact with the health department, have you?
That is correct, yep.
Okay, so same thing there. Any grant would be conditioned upon approval and acceptance by the health department. All of these departments do things different than what we do. Their jurisdictions and focuses are different than ours. So again, we want to make sure that we touch all the bases with the various boards and committees in town that have jurisdiction.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Next, nobody spoke to me about signage. What are you going to do about signage?
If you drive down South Meadow Road, you see all the gate signs for the Plymouth Airport?
Yes.
We were trying to maintain the same size, dimension, and-
So there will be a new sign, or you use, there's no existing sign out there?
No, there is not, no.
So this would be a new sign. Remember that the Town of Carver has signing bylaws, or signed bylaws, right?
Correct.
With which you must comply. So whatever decision you make on signage, make sure that it's consistent with the bylaw. Otherwise, I'm going to be saying hello to both of you guys again. You have nice faces, I have to say. Okay. So we'll probably put something in any decision that allows for this grant, that any signage will be in compliance with the Town of Carver bylaw.
I believe there was language to that effect in the planning board approval as well.
Might be.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll cover it as well. And finally, you have given us plans, correct?
Correct.
And so we're going to make sure that whatever decision we make is in accordance with the plans of record. Now, that seems like it's an obvious thing, but we have had people come before us with plans. And then between the time that we vote on those plans, and they get down to the building department to get their permit, lo and behold, what do you think's happened? The plans have-
Changed.
That's right. And that's a no-no. That cannot happen. So we've had to get people back in here and explain to us why they were doing the one step, two-step on us. Sometimes it's totally innocent, and then other times it's maybe not so innocent. But make sure you are complying with the plans that you have provided us in our file, okay? And he will look at those and make sure that what he's getting in the end is the same thing that came to us.
Absolutely.
Okay? Those are my questions and comments. Does anyone else have anything?
I do not.
Ms. Mello, you must have something. No? She's uncommonly quiet on this one.
She got her 50 feet, she's good to go.
Okay. Any member of the public like to be heard on this proposal? Nobody drinks beer here? All right, back to the board members for a final comment, if any, or question. Do I hear a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that passes unanimously, and what I want to do now is suggest a finding to the board. And it would be as false. That the board finds that the benefits of the proposed use outweigh any detrimental impacts on the town and the neighborhood in view of the particular characteristics of the site and of the proposal in relation to that site. Anybody want to make a motion to accept that finding?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, this is the finding which will undergird our legal decision, which is coming next. Yes.
Should we close the hearing?
We did. Did we close the hearing already?
Yes.
So you're still thinking about your 50 feet. So I'd like to hear a motion from one of you to grant the special permit that's being requested in this case.
I'll make a motion to grant the special permit.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now, we have conditions that we need to tick through, and I raised a number of those, so I suppose it's incumbent upon me to go back over them again. And if any member of the board here feels as if I'm leaving anything out, or would like to discuss any individual condition, then please interrupt me. First, that this special permit is subject to obtaining all necessary local and state licenses for the serving of alcohol. Second, hours of operation will be 3:00 PM to 9:00 PM, Monday through Thursday, and Friday through Sunday from 12:00 to 11:00 PM. Next, we're going to make sure that, in accordance to what I said earlier, that public safety has to weigh in on approving this proposal, and you can coordinate with the planning department on that. Likewise, the health department, okay? It sounds like you've already taken those steps, so this should be a fairly easy thing.
Correct.
Next, we want to make sure as well that our decision is consistent with and in compliance with the planning board decision dated March 26, 2024. So you want to abide by those enumerated requirements as voted on by the planning board, okay? And again, they're different than we are in many respects. In terms of signage, we don't need to act on signage or list that as a condition because you're not asking for anything just yet, but we are going to make this decision conditioned on the plans of record. So those are the things that I have. Does anybody want to add any other conditions to the grant of the special permit in this case?
I thought you mentioned about the sign, that they would have to follow whatever the bylaw was for sign.
Yeah, I'm not sure that we need to mention that.
Okay.
You guys, you guys know what to do, and if you don't, or you try to slide one by the building department, you're going to get slapped. So is everybody good with these conditions? It's just-
Yes.
-enumerated?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to accept each and every one of these conditions as a condition to the grant of the special permit?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, John.
Thank you very much.
Welcome to town.
Thank you.
When I drop in there one day, I'm going to get a beer.
Hey, friend.
I'm there.
Okay. Our next case on the docket is case number 94-5-0-R. This is a petition that has been filed by Peter Allegrini. Is he in the, Peter, come and sit up in front here with us, doing business as Signs By Design, Inc., right?
No, we're Signs By Design, Inc. You can't do business as. I don't own the company, my wife does, but-
Oh, that's, that's an important correction.
Thank you.
And I was in the middle of reading something, so if you have something to give us going forward, let us know before you approach. Thank you. And you are requesting a special permit pursuant to sections 3500 and sections following 5221 and 5130 of the Carver zoning bylaw for property located at 287 Tremont Street in Carver, like I said. This is at accessories map 94 lot 5-0-R to install a 76 by 120 square foot freestanding sign in a general business district. A special permit is requested due to size. The proposed square footage is approximately 60 square feet.
Inaccurate.
Maximum allowed is 10 square feet. And the height, 12 feet, is requested, maximum allowed is 10. Now, this is the way it's been published. I'm reading the notice into the record. And Mr. Allegrini, if you have something that you want to say to us with regard to the accuracy of the notice, I'll hear you, then you can get into the substance of your request.
So Peter Allegrini signs by design to Commerce Way, Sweet A. What we're looking to do is, as everybody has probably seen, the new building that Erickson's has put up is absolutely beautiful. And what we're trying to do is get the sign at the street approved. Their previous sign was 24 square feet with a 600-square-foot building. So we're looking to add another street sign to replace that one, except they put a 400, 4,500-square-foot, three-bay contractor building on the site as well, as the ice cream shop is 1,250 square feet. We're looking for a 12, 12-square-foot for the road sign. The old sign was an internally lit sign with 24 square feet, which we're not looking for an internally lit sign. And the old sign was approximately 15 to 20 feet tall. So we're looking for a street sign with three tenant signs on the bottom for future tenants, for a total of about 10 square feet, or roughly 3 and 1/2 square feet, plus or minus per tenant. So the, I don't know, we, we sent this in when we requested a, a meeting with, with you guys, and I don't know how the published numbers got published. I have no idea.
So so far, I think I've heard you say that you do need two extra square feet. Is that correct? Two extra square feet on height, is that right?
Well, the, the height of the sign is actually 10-foot, but the building department said that we have to use, there's a, a two-foot, it comes up two foot from the road.
Yeah, the, the grade is high.
The grade is higher because they, obviously, they redid the property, so the grade's higher. So that gives us a total 12-foot.
We have to fix what it is that you're looking for here. Now, if you're going to contest these, these dimensions with us, then this puts us back to square one, and we may have to republish us. So be careful what you say, okay? If the building department said that because of the grade of the road, it's 12 feet, or, or, yeah, 12 feet that you're looking for, and 10 is, is the max that's allowed without a special permit, then I think you'd be well advised to go with that.
12 feet it is, sir.
Okay. And size? Do you agree with the dimension on size that you're looking for?
The size that, that we're looking for is the, the, the proof that I, I handed out, not the, not the size that, that the town, I don't know how they came up with it, but the town is-
The building inspector came up with 60 square feet.
60 square feet.
How much do you say your, your sign is going to be? How big?
With, with all four pieces, about 30 square feet.
Explain to us, then, why the building department had this doubled, from what you're saying.
Sir, I'm not the building department, I can't explain it to you.
Well, you must have gone to them and said, what is this? It's 30, it's not 60. Didn't you talk to them about that?
You haven't had a conversation since, since you saw this.
I have not.
I would like to hear from the building inspector, how he came up, because his email says 60 square feet.
Yeah, it's all right.
Because if we grant 60 square feet, and it's, you know, massive, I don't think that's doing anyone any good.
Well, we kind of interrupted Mr. Allegrini, so I'll let you continue to present. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So we're, we're looking for a, the, the Erickson sign is proposed on the proof, I believe is about 47 inches round, and then each tenant sign is approximately 3.1 square feet each. And that's per, per side.
Anything further?
I, I don't know if they, the, the building department was considered, considering square footage per each side, but I've, I've never been in a meeting or filled out a permit that that, that's been the case.
Okay. Done?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If you have something more, we're all ears.
No, I mean, I, I hope you guys have all seen the absolutely beautiful addition that, that JCM has done with the Erickson's property. They take care of all their own property. They have a, a property manager on site.
Okay, I don't think any of us is disputing the fact that the current structure is far better than the old one, but this is a sign permit request.
Right.
And so we're focused on the sign. And I do want to note, just for the record, that this came in as a request for a variance. I don't blame you for that. I'm not quite sure how it came in as a variance or was characterized as a variance, but-
May I say?
The, the version of the signed bylaw, which was in effect in 2019, gave jurisdiction over sign matters to the planning board as the special permit granting authority. However, the bylaw that came into effect in 2022 is silent as to the specific local authority, which has jurisdiction in cases with regard to oversized signs. So sections 5221 and 5310 give the ZBA authority to grant special permits under circumstances when the bylaws do not specifically designate otherwise. So we're going to treat this as a request for a special permit, not as a request for a variance, and that's how it was advertised as well. a variance, and that's how it was advertised as well. That's just a little bit of history that we need to go through.
Any other signs that we've done like this has all been by special permit.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure why it was characterized when it came out of the building department as a variance, but it's much better cast. What you're looking for is much better cast as a request for a special permit.
That's how we've always done them in the past.
Right. So that's how we're going to proceed today. And if you've been listening, and I know you have, there is a special permit by law that we have to tick through, which has to do with, at the outset, social, economic, or community needs, which are going to be served by the proposal. I don't think there's any question on that one, is there, board members? Next, traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading, not really applicable to your situation because this is just a sign.
We're 10 to 12 feet off the road.
Catenquity of utilities and other public services. Well, you're not going to be lighting this sign internally, so we don't have to worry about serving the sign or servicing the sign with electricity. Neighborhood character and social structures. Well, that's a general business district there, is it not?
I believe that's how they characterized it.
It is. So it seems to be consistent with neighborhood character, this sign. Impacts on the natural environment, I would assume would be minimal, right? And then finally, the potential fiscal impact, including impact on town services, tax base, and employment, really not relevant here. So what we need to struggle with now, if we want to call it a struggle, or at least address, is if you're needing two feet on height, given the grade of the road, Mr. Allegrini, we need now to understand how much we need to be giving you by way of relief in a special permit on size, because the planning department has this, it's 60, and you're trying to tell us it's 30. That's a big difference. That's twice the size. So if you have nothing further to add on that discrepancy, maybe you folks do.
In the permit, he applied for it, says 76 inches and 120, so it must have just got transferred instead of inches maybe.
Can you do the math?
Well, I, I think, I think what happened was, I did the math.
Oh, good.
Six and a half feet this way.
Yep.
Nine and a half feet this way. When you multiply that, it's 60 square feet.
So they just must be adding, I think both sides of the sign.
Are they including the structure?
No, they're looking at, they're, they're taking the, the width and the height of the structure, and they're saying 114 by 78 is six and a half feet by seven and a half feet. So volume wise, it's 60 square feet.
Because it's double sided.
Are we able to specify height, width, and thickness? I don't, depth?
Do we need to?
The depth? Do we need to specify the depth though?
No, I don't think so, but probably just the height and the width. Height and the width, because those are the issues that are before us currently.
Because now, if you, if you add the depth, now you're actually not talking about square footage, you're talking about volume at that point.
Yeah, all right. Well, I mean, if we did it that way, if we were very specific as to the height and the width, we wouldn't have to go with 60 square feet.
Any further comments or questions? Mr. Barrington is stretching his neck. What do you say, Mr. Barrington?
So is this a two-sided sign?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's not facing the road, it's this way, so people coming from both directions?
Yes, sir. Yep.
I know you told us that this is not going to be internally illuminated, but how are you going to make it visible to traffic at night?
The, he has plans for uplighting.
What do you mean, uplighting?
From the ground.
What are your folks thinking about this, as opposed to goose neck lighting from the top? Goose neck lighting, which would be angled downward onto the face of the sign, as opposed to lighting from the ground up?
Yeah.
What would you say to that, Ms. Doll?
It's usually better.
Less glare, you mean?
Which way?
From the top down.
From the top down.
Can you speak to the difference between goose neck and uplighting? Why would someone choose?
Tomato, tomato.
Pardon? Tomato, tomato.
He's a sign guy. Leave him alone.
He likes signs.
You're gonna have, you're gonna have less glare, you're gonna have less glare on the signs from uplighting than you are straight from down. Look at the police station sign, on the, the badge on the, on the, I'm sorry, the patch on the front of the building.
Yep.
It's uplit.
It's uplit. I think that's the newest sign.
And we're using a lot of the same materials in this that we did on that sign.
What's this sign going to be made of?
So the structure is aluminum. The decorative or is going to be PVC materials.
You mean the actual Erickson's ice cream part of it?
Not, I'm not there yet.
Oh, I'm sorry about that.
The tenant signs would be an aluminum box with slide in faces. And the Erickson sign is composed of, it's many different products. It's, um, HDU sign foam for the ice cream cone. It is PVC, it's acrylic, and it's vinyl. And if anybody's been down to Erickson's yet, the sign on the building is made exactly the same way we're going to make the sign on the street. So it'll all match. It is.
So aluminum, PVC, vinyl, and what was the other?
Acrylic.
Acrylic.
And HDU.
What's that?
Sign foam. So urethane, man-made urethane product that will make the ice cream cone out of.
And the individual signs for the other three businesses will not be individually lit in any way?
No.
No? So what are we thinking that we want to do with regard to lighting? Ground up or top to the bottom with goose neck?
Preference?
I'm not sure it matters.
Yeah, it doesn't, it probably wouldn't really.
Don't all talk at once.
I like the bottom lighting. I'll be honest, I think the goose neck's getting a little.
A little old, is it?
You're so cutting edge, Fran. Any other comments or questions from board members? Any questions, comments, or observations from members of the public who would like to be heard? We have one. Could you stand and give us your name and address?
Karen Lafferty, 67 Main Street. Regis had a question, so is it, is it, I get confused by, are you, is there two additional people going there, two, there's two additional slots, or is it three additional slots?
I, I, as far as the sign goes?
Yeah.
So there's three additional slots for the sign, for tenants, and then the Erickson's sign at the top.
Who else would like to be heard on this? Back to the board members. Questions, comments, observations, discussion. Look at Mr. Poirier, he's got his arms crossed.
Will this be the largest sign that we've located in town? I'm concerned about the size.
Yeah, but what was the one that we did up at?
Sky, the sky.
Yeah, Sky Blue Side was bigger than that.
I mean, that was massive.
That was on the side of the building.
And it was also facing the highway, not, not a wall.
Okay.
If you want a comparison, the mobile station down there, this is much smaller than the mobile station. It's much less square footage than the cannabis place. It's less square footage than the concrete place. It's, it's less square footage than a lot of stuff in town.
That's why I wanted an idea of what.
Yeah.
How we compare.
It's less square footage than what was actually up there, or, or about equal.
To the previous one?
Than the previous old single pole.
Right.
Sign that was there.
So have we decided what the size is here? Are we saying 60 square feet?
Can we say according to the plan of record?
Right, dimensions of 78 inches by 114 inches.
That's 60 square feet, right?
Okay. Either way.
When we write these decisions, Mr. Allegrini, we have to be very specific on dimensions and lot references and so forth.
Understood.
So, does anyone have anything further that they want to say?
No.
All right. So I'm going to ask for a motion to close this hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I, I get the feeling there's a little competition going on here. All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
So this hearing is closed. Now we go to the board's finding on the matter, and I'm going to propose that the board vote on the following finding. That the benefits of the proposed use outweigh the detrimental impacts on the town and the neighborhood in view of the particular characteristics of the site and of the proposal in relation to that site. Anybody want to make a motion to accept that finding?
I'll make a motion to accept that finding. I was going to let them fight it out.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Again, what we're doing here is legal stuff, and it has to do with having an appropriate foundation, if you will, for the decision which is now going to be made, which is to grant the special permit. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Subject to certain conditions, which we'll talk about in a minute. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
For the special permit granted, subject to certain conditions. And these conditions, I can reference, as I did on the previous case, as follows. That you will be permitted to install a sign that is 12 feet high based upon the grade of the road. And the square footage would be 60 square feet based upon the drawing and the plan that you've given us. Also, that this grant of the special permit will be subject to the drawing of record. Right, Mr. Barrington?
Correct.
He's given me the head nod, so I think I did that right. Is there anything else? Oh, lighting, right? We want to do, lighting will be ground up to satisfy Ms. Mello's aesthetic tastes.
And then I would like to put something in there about distance from the road. How far back did you say it was going to be?
I'm embarrassed to tell you, I don't know exactly. It's either 10 or 12 feet.
It said 10.
It says 10.
It says 10.
But I thought you said 12.
Yeah, it's 10. Whatever it says in there.
12 feet is requested? Where, where is that?
I don't know that, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong. Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
You can correct me if I'm wrong. I don't believe Carver has a bylaw for a sign setback.
It does say.
Where was the old one? Where, how far was the old one?
Yep.
Application, 10 feet.
Ah, probably about seven, five.
Was it?
Yeah, it was pretty close to the road.
Well, yeah, but I'm just thinking sightlines, you know, people pulling in, people pulling.
Absolutely, yeah.
So the application says 10 feet.
You asking for more than that, Mr. Allegrini?
No, 10 feet.
10 feet back from the road, right?
Yep.
The other dimensions I mentioned are what you're looking for. 12 feet of height, 60 square feet on the, on the sign as diagrammed out and as part of the record. Yes?
Yes.
So those are the conditions. And we'll write them in so you'll be reminded when you read it what these conditions are.
Thank you.
Because the conversation could go back and forth pretty rapidly, as you've learned tonight. Poirier, anything further?
I'm sorry?
Anything further? Mr. Barrington?
I'm good.
Ms. Doll?
Nope.
Ms. Cullen?
No.
Ms. Mello?
Good, thank you.
All right. All in favor of these conditions to the special permit that I've outlined, as to height, as to size, as to lighting, and as to setback from the road? Yes. Yes.
And diagrams.
And, yeah.
And diagrams.
Right.
I'll make that motion, that we accept the conditions as listed. Second?
Mr. Barrington beat you on this one, Ms. Cullen. All in favor?
Aye.
You got it?
Thank you.
All right, we'll get this written up, and you should have it in a few days. Oh, before you leave, Ms. Mello has a little speech to give.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
So the decision will be written up, and it goes back to Town Hall. Once it's recorded at Town Hall, there's an appeal period of 20 days. After, so it should be back at Town Hall by Monday, okay? It gets stamped as the decision is final. There is an appeal period of 20 days, so tick it off on your calendar. They should reach out to you once the appeal period has expired, but if not, go back to Town Hall. They will give you the decision to take down to the registry of deeds, and you can file it there, so it's on record. Correct?
What happened to a special permit when you just went in front of the planning board? You paid your 700 bucks and you moved on?
Well, I told you, the history is that.
The history is that the town of Carver signed permits, signed bylaws are probably more antiquated than George Washington's teeth. They need to be addressed, and I don't know who. Whatever, whatever they might be.
Signed bylaw changed over a two-year, two, three-year period.
The signed bylaw, I don't believe, changed. The way in which you got a permit for a sign changed.
But the bylaw.
But the bylaw did not really change.
The bylaw changed in 2022?
I think it was 2022. But rather than getting into history now, since you've won your case, I think it's time for you to withdraw. Thank you for your time, Ms.
Thank you, attorney.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
I hope I see you guys all.
Did you say black raspberry?
Black raspberry, thank you.
That's my favorite.
Thank you.
We're going to suspend for five minutes for a bathroom break, and so that we can catch our breath, we have one more case here that I suspect most of you are wanting to hear. So let's take a break. It's now about seven minutes after eight. Let's come back at 8:15. Thank you for your patience.
We should turn the.
We are suspended.
Yeah, can we turn?
All right, I have a few questions at the outset, but let me sort of set the tone here.
If I may.
Yes.
We would like to record. Just want to inform the.
Well, this meeting is already being recorded. It's being live streamed, as a matter of fact.
We would also like to record it. It's allowed under.
I'm sure that you need my permission for that, but I appreciate it, and you may do so.
Thank you.
All right.
Can you introduce yourself? Or can you have a, Mr. Chair, can you have a?
Absolutely. Now, I know who you are, but can you introduce yourself and your professional address, please?
Sure. My name is Margaret Sheehan. I'm an attorney. My professional address is 158 Center Hill Road in Plymouth, Massachusetts.
Okay. So we have received voluminous submissions in advance of tonight's meeting. Thank you for making those available to us in advance. That's appreciated. And as I've set up here in the past, not just in situations like the situation that you present, but in all other cases, we actually read through things. And we read through things days before you see us up here. So we have a familiarity with the cases that we have to address and sometimes struggle with, and it tends to expedite things and allows us to ask more intelligent questions. So having said that, let me sort of summarize what I understand your submissions to allege. Otherwise, we might be here for a prolonged period of time. As I understand it, Ms. Sheehan, on behalf of this organization called Save the Pine Barrens, Inc., which you are a part of and also which you represent, that the subject site is being used to operate a trucking and freight terminal to load, unload, weigh, process, tranship, and store, at least temporarily. unload, weigh, process, tranship, and store, at least temporarily, aggregate materials, and that at least five hundred trucks enter and exit the site daily without necessary permits from the planning board. Further, we understand that you acknowledge that on September 16, 2014, the planning board issued a site plan review and special permit to a company called Reed Custom Soils, LLC, which granted it approval to use the subject site for manufacturing. And further, that you allege that Reed had indicated at that time, this is back in 2014, that this use would involve a temporary interim soil blending facility, and that it would build a facility to manufacture pre-mixed soils and build buildings, employee parking, stormwater system, bathing, underground utilities, and exterior storage area, office, truck scales, parking area, the whole nine yards. This was all addressed, as you acknowledge, by the planning board back in 2014. You also have indicated by way of your submissions that the buildings and structures, infrastructure shown on the plans, going back to 2014, have not been built, and that the so-called truck and freight terminal operating at the site is not a so-called manufacturing facility. Now, we also know from the history of this case that you have sent a demand for enforcement to the building commissioner in the form of a self-styled cease and desist letter dated February 22, 2024, that accused A.D. Makepeace Cranberry Company and Reed Custom Soils, LLC of conducting these alleged operations, which I just described, at the subject site. And that you also allege in your submissions, Ms. Sheehan, that Reed Custom Soils, LLC is said to be a subsidiary of A.D. Makepeace Cranberry Company. Now, you have signed your petition on behalf of Save the Pine Barrens, Inc., and you also allege that the building commissioner failed to respond to your letter by March 7, 2024, as required by Massachusetts laws, general forty-eight, or chapter forty-eight. Now, that's sort of a background to this case and the submissions that you have sent to us before this evening. Have I basically represented correctly your position with regard to this application or petition? Yes?
Thank you for that summary. I have more details to add. I did ask if I could make a slideshow, but apparently...
Not there yet. But in terms of introducing this matter to the public, both here and at home, I thought it would be helpful to go through the, the basis of your case. Not that I want to speak for you, because we're going to give you plenty of time to do that, but for now, I think it's important that we at least get a summary of what the concerns are and the allegations are that undergird your reason for being here tonight.
Well, there are a couple of things that you mentioned that I would like to correct.
Go.
I don't believe I, our materials ever stated that there were five hundred trucks a day entering and exiting. I don't believe that's correct. And I did not, I don't believe, say that the building inspector did not respond to the letter. He did respond to the demand letter on March 7. I included that in your packet.
And that's where I wanted to go next. Are you done with the corrections?
Yes.
Okay. Only two corrections, that's not so bad. And I did want to draw your attention to the fact that I did see in the submissions, and perhaps one of the board members can pull this out, that there was at least initially an allegation that the building commissioner had not responded on a timely basis. But I do have a copy of a letter here from the building commissioner dated March 7, 2024, where he responded and said that at that time, he did not believe in his professional judgment that the allegations and the request for enforcement for the subject location were meritorious. So he denied your request for enforcement, and you, in turn, decided to file this appeal. Now, I've referenced a couple of times in my introductory remarks, the subject site. And I want to get clear with you right now what that subject site is, because this is not, this, this site is way off-road. And I've seen different addresses and different lot references. We have to know what we're doing. So I see by way of your application that you reference, and I'll take these one at a time, you reference Lot 2. Do you see that? Take your time.
I will note that the lots change from time to time. It's clear that this location is 46 Federal Road. It is part of a larger lot owned by A.D. Makepeace, and I have it in my slides. If you would like to see the slide, I can show you exactly.
Yeah, I know you want to get to these slides, and show and tell is always fun, but you have specifically referenced Lot 2.
I, the letter references Lot 2-4.
What letter are you referring to?
This one. This one.
Subject matter, map 131, lots 2-4 and 4-3.
And what is your application reference?
What application are you talking about?
Well, your appeal.
My appeal letter, my request for enforcement states...
The one that you filed with the building department to get before us. That's what we go by.
Oh, you don't go by the appeal?
I don't go by letters necessarily. I want to know what you filed for. And I saw that it was Lot 2, among other lots, and just going to go through these one at a time. Lot 2.
Are you talking about the form that was filled out to seek this appeal? What are you, I don't understand what you're talking about.
Yes, exactly.
So I'm talking about a letter, a request for enforcement that identifies the site.
And the public...
And I'm also talking about the, the application and the decision.
And I think we're talking at cross purposes here. What we need to understand is what you're asking us to take a look at with reference to the specific site, okay, or sites. And you referenced in your filing at the building department, Lot 2. And I'm looking at the public hearing notice, which also referenced Lot 2. So, at least at this juncture, can we say that Lot 2 was part of your request for us to review tonight?
Map 131.
Lot 2.
Lot 2-4, yes.
Now, that's not what I'm saying. And let's not mince words, because we're going to be here until 10:00 if we do. I'm going to rely on the documentation as filed, all right? You filed for, among other lots, Lot 2, and the public hearing notice referenced Lot 2. There's no doubt about that. And we should be upfront and not evasive with these questions, because these should be simple questions. It's important that we, as a board, understand what lot or lots we're talking about. Now, first, with regard to Lot 2, I have been advised by the planning department that there has not been a Lot 2 in the town of Carver for twenty years. So I'm not going to talk to you about Lot 2 tonight, because Lot 2 doesn't exist, despite what you have referenced in your filings. Now, the next lot that you do reference is Lot 2-4, and then you go on to say and/or 4-3. So I need to know which lot it is that you want us to take a look at. Is it 2-4 or 4-3? I'm assuming it's 2-4.
I would like you to look at both of them. I would like you to look at the location on the town zoning map where Reed Custom Soils has a planning department allegedly, site plan review, and special permit.
For me, I'm not doing that, and I'll tell you why. Again, you have asked for review on Lot 2-4 and/or 4-3. Now, we're not playing hide the ball here. We need to know what lot you're talking about. Is it 2-4 or is it 4-3? It's none of this and/or stuff. We have to be precise. I'm assuming that you're talking about 2-4.
If I...
That's map 131, I should preface that.
I'm looking at map 131, Lot 2-4R. It is a five hundred and thirty-eight acre parcel listed with the town of Carver for the fiscal year 2024. It is where A.D. Makepeace operates Reed Custom Soils.
Okay.
Now, you may play back and forth in cat and mouse with the lots, just like Makepeace does with their operations, but anyone can see that Reed Custom Soils has a sign on the road at 46 Federal Road where it operates a business.
All right, you've been in front of us more than once. I respect your crusade in this case, and I'm not saying that in any manner that's meant to be disparaging. I have respect for what you're doing. I have respect for your role as a member of the bar. This board, however, does not play cat and mouse. That's not the way to start off with us. Do not go negative on us. What we're trying to do is understand what it is that you're asking for in relation to the site in question. That's based upon your own application, your own writing. You signed off on it, you dated it. And by the way, let's talk about 2-4, because you're right, it's a five hundred-plus acre lot. Ready? Let's talk about that. Do you remember coming before the board back in 2021 alleging many of the same activities as to certain specifically identified lots at that time? This would have been case 131-2. Do you remember that?
It's actually quite different. Yes, of course, I was before here. I have been before this...
Let me finish, and I promise I'll give you plenty of time. So we're talking about 2-4. And that is a large lot, and there are activities going on at that lot. We get it. You know we get it, because I just laid the groundwork for your case. But on October 26, 2021, this board, after multiple hearings, issued a written decision. And one of the lots that we addressed in that decision, based upon your presentation at that time, Ms. Sheehan, was map 131, Lot 2-4. The same one that you're talking to us about tonight. Now, we go further. You appealed our decision, as is your right. That's fine. That decision went to the Superior Court. You had a full and fair opportunity to litigate our decision before Judge Sullivan, who issued a written decision denying your appeal, upholding the decision of this board on multiple lots, including Lot 2-4, that you're back in front of us for tonight. You chose not to appeal Judge Sullivan's decision. So, fast forward now, roughly two and a half years, and here we are at the end of May, 2024. We're talking about the same lot and basically the same kinds of activities. Why is this not collaterally stopped? Why don't we have issue preclusion going on in this case? Why should we give you any further review on an issue which we have already addressed, which you've already appealed, and you've chosen after the, the loss of that appeal not to appeal further to the appeals court? Why are we doing this again?
We're not doing this again, Mr. Chair. We're not doing anything like what we did in 2021.
See if you can distinguish it for me.
I certainly will, and I thought our papers, on multiple pages, as you showed, made that very clear. We, that appeal, and that case that the board refused to take up and refused to enforce the zoning law in that case, that dealt with sand and gravel removal. And as you well know, it said that you considered that to be earth removal governed under the bylaw. We are talking about a completely different activity here. We are not talking about earth removal. We are talking about the operation of a truck terminal. Reed Custom Soils, you can go to their very own website, and you can see that they are operating a business there. They admitted, Makepeace admitted, that they are subject to the town's zoning laws for the operation of Reed Custom Soils. They did that in 2014, when they went to the planning board and applied for a site plan review and a special permit under the zoning law. So they are not operating a manufacturing facility there. They did not build the buildings that were described in Mr. Benn's plans in that instance, and instead, they are operating a trucking terminal. I don't think anyone in good faith could deny the facts and the observations of the public or of anyone that Reed Custom Soils is operating a trucking terminal at 46 Federal Road.
Okay. So, I have a distinct memory, and these board members frequently have a better memory than I, especially Mr. Barrington. But I have a distinct memory that in that 2021 case, Reed Custom Soils and its operations on map 131, Lot 2-4, were discussed extensively. And in fact, they're referenced in our written decision. So we know all about Reed Custom Soils. You educated us on, on Reed Custom Soils and what it was doing out there. And you made an eloquent case, as you are attempting to do tonight, to get us to address this. But we've talked about Reed Custom Soils already. And insofar as that earlier case is concerned, we found that this board had no jurisdiction, because this was an earth removal matter, as you characterized it in your petition at that time. You were, you were questioning whether the permits issued by the Earth Removal Committee had been exceeded in scope and intent, as I recall. Now we're talking about the planning board. So we were shifted focus now, or at least your papers have shifted focus from the ERC to the planning board. And you're asking us to essentially reverse a decision that the planning board has already made.
No.
Well, tell me why you're not, I mean, the planning board has made a decision. Why are you not coming before the planning board on this?
Because it's a zoning violation, and we followed the zoning law by asking for enforcement of the zoning law to stop the illegal operation of a trucking terminal at 46 Federal Road. It was not earth removal, and it was not challenging the planning board decision. The planning board decision has lapsed. That planning board special permit and site plan review is void and of no effect, because they have not built the manufacturing buildings. I don't know if Mr. Palmer made an inspection before he denied our request, but if he had, he would have seen that there are no buildings there. There's no stormwater plan there. There are no utilities there. And so they didn't do what they said they were going to do. So they are operating a business without a zoning approval. Are you denying that they're subject to the town's zoning laws? That a trucking terminal is exempt from the zoning laws?
My first question of you, and I'm asking the questions, by the way, not you, is this. If you were aware of this back in 2021, when you came before this board and utilized, I think, three different dates to make your presentation, why didn't you bring it up then?
We brought up various zoning violations then. It appears that...
If you're, if you're saying this one is different than what we worked on back in 2021, why didn't you just bring it in under the same umbrella?
Well, perhaps I...
Talk to us about it at the same time.
Perhaps I could have. However, it did take time to research very carefully what planning board approvals had been given, and I confirmed that just recently to determine that there was no building permit ever issued under that site plan review and special permit.
Well, I understand, and you know that I do, the time constraints that we attorneys have, especially when it comes to researching cases that go back a number of years. But that's not a problem that you can visit on us. That's your obligation to present... That's your obligation to present what facts and documentation you can at the time that you make your presentation before this board. And I'm still amazed that this is coming up again now, Ms. Sheehan. When you had the opportunity in 2021, multiple public hearings at that time, and you knew this stuff was going on out there, allegedly, you knew it. And you never talked to us about it. You never made it part of your petition. This is classic collateral stop or issue preclusion stuff, in my view. Now, you mentioned violation of zoning bylaws, and I want to ask you about that. Where is our jurisdiction here? Where in the book? Cite for me. Where do we have jurisdiction on this?
The State Zoning Act states that any person may seek enforcement of the zoning bylaw. That is what we have done. When that enforcement is denied, which is what Mr. Palmer did on March 7, that person can seek enforcement from the Zoning Board of Appeals. It's one of your fundamental duties of the Zoning Board of Appeals under the State Zoning Act and under your bylaws.
So you talked to us in 2021 about Article 1, the Purpose Clause, which is a very broad clause, and you pointed to that and said, well, that gives us basic authority and jurisdiction to handle all different kinds of things. Is that where you're going with this again?
As I just stated, the State Zoning Act gives any person the right to seek enforcement of the zoning bylaw. And that is what we are doing here, and it is a zoning board's job to review a denial of a request for enforcement and determine whether an alleged activity in fact violates the zoning bylaw. And we are saying that the operation of a trucking terminal at 46 Federal Road in Carver, shown by multiple facts and YouTube videos that we submitted to you and we would be happy to play for you, and by A.D. Makepeace's own trucking logs, show that this site is being operated as a trucking terminal. And I would be happy to read what the bylaw definition of a trucking terminal is.
Okay. Before you do, and I grant you everything that you just said because I kind of laid the case out for you in my introductory remarks, can you cite to a specific bylaw in here? This is the Bible. These are the laws, okay? Tell me where we can find our jurisdiction over this particular situation. Is it Article 1, the Purpose Clause? Does this give us authority to order the building commissioner to enforce?
No, you are supposed to enforce. The Zoning Board of Appeals is required to enforce the zoning bylaw of the town.
We don't enforce the zoning bylaws. The building commissioner...
Then you can direct the building inspector. First, you have to determine, first, a zoning board, I'm not trying to make this personal, fundamental zoning law in the state of Massachusetts, which I have been doing for a very long time, requires you to act as a semi-judicial body and to look at the facts and the law and determine whether a violation has occurred. So as you said, you laid out the facts. I have presented the law. It is a zoning board's job to determine whether a violation has occurred. If you find a violation has occurred, then you direct the building inspector to enforce the zoning bylaw and issue a cease and desist for the illegal operation of a trucking terminal.
And I respect what you're trying to do here. You want to get to the substance of your argument, and that's fine. But before you get to substance and law, you get to procedure, right? Procedure's first. And we know as attorneys that the doctrine of collateral stop and issue preclusion are critical in establishing whether we can move forward and begin to talk about substance. Now, you've already acknowledged to me tonight that maybe you could have, back in 2021, talked about this at the same time. But here we go again. We've already addressed many of these allegations of mining, improper mining, and so forth, within the context of ERC permits. And the difference with this, I suppose, if you want to say that this is a difference, perhaps without a distinction, but a difference nonetheless, is that we're talking about planning board action and subsequent inactivity, and then activities going on at the site that seem to go beyond what would be allowed. I am struggling, if you can't tell already, why we're here again tonight on this when you had the opportunity three years ago to talk about all of this. It's the same site, 131, 2-4. Don't shake your head. It's the same site. You acknowledge that. It's the same site. It's the same site that we ruled on back in 2021. The parties are basically the same, and the relief that you're requesting is the same. Now, if this isn't classic issue preclusion, I don't know what is. Maybe I need to go back to law school.
I would like to address that. This is a completely different violation. As you said previously, it was a zoning violation for conducting commercial mining in an agricultural district. That 2021 complaint involved mining, sand and gravel mining. This involves operation of a trucking terminal. This is a separate and distinct business operation, trucks going in and out, trucks coming in with sand and gravel, being weighed at the Reed Custom Soils Scale House, as shown on the sign right on 46 Federal Road, going in, unloading or reloading, perhaps going over to the soil blending facility, quote/unquote, and mixing some sand in and then going back out. I would like to read the definition of truck terminal, which appeared nowhere in the 2021 request for enforcement. Truck terminal shall mean the land or buildings in which freight brought by truck is assembled and are stored for routing or reshipment, or in which semi-trailers, including tractor and our trailer units and other trucks, are parked or stored. That was not the subject of the 2021 case. There is no issue preclusion. There's no collateral stop. This is a completely different case and violations that have continued and gone on. Even if we had brought up those violations in 2021, if the violations were never addressed and never ceased, we certainly, any person, could have brought another request for enforcement for every day that Reed Custom Soils has operated a trucking terminal at 46 Federal Road.
So as I understand your argument, what you're saying is the earlier case had to do with earth removal, and this one has to do with the fact that they're operating allegedly a truck terminal over there. Is that the major distinction that you're drawing?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Is there anything further that you'd like to add? Because I've been quizzing you, and I feel like I should allow other people now to speak
I did have a slideshow, as I mentioned.
Yeah, let's wait on that. Board members, is there anyone that would like to make any comments or ask any questions or engage in any discussion?
Has somebody been keeping track of trucks coming and going on a daily basis, monthly basis?
Yes, many people have. As I provided in your packet, there is at least one video showing 250 trucks coming in and out on one day. I personally observed 50 trucks in a two-hour period. Many of the residents can attest to the heavy truck traffic, the excessive truck traffic, and the safety concerns that they experience. This is well documented, and it's been going on year after year after year. We filed a complaint with the building department due to excessive traffic in 2021, due to the emissions of toxic silica dust. This is an environmental justice neighborhood where the population suffers an undue and excessive burden from pollution, including truck traffic. It is estimated that approximately 500,000 trucks have been in and out of this trucking terminal over the last several years. And Reed Custom Soils, as you know, is part of A.D. Makepeace. And Mr. Arati, who is the general manager of Reed Custom Soils, acknowledges that he inspects the sand and gravel mining sites that are used to supply reeds. So the trucks are coming in. He admits he goes to the sites. He runs Reed Custom Soils, and he has truck logs, some of which I provided to you. And if the building inspector had investigated, or if someone in the town of Carver would like to go and see how many trucks are coming in and out of Reed Custom Soils on a daily basis, we would certainly urge that you do that. And I'm sure that the residents and the people who travel on that road daily would appreciate concerns from the town addressing their concerns for safety.
Does that answer your question?
Yep.
Mr. Barrington? Mr. Poirier, would you have anything at this time?
No.
Ms. Cullen, do you have anything at this time?
No.
Ms. Dahl, do you have anything at this time?
No.
Ms. Mello? Always has something.
I do want to point out, per Ms. Cullen, that in the letter to Mr. Palmer in an effort to enforce, it stated that Reed is using the site to operate a trucking and freight terminal to load, unload, weigh, process, tranship, and temporarily store aggregate materials. At least 500 trucks daily enter and exit the site. That is in the letter.
Is that what this is about? Or is the Zoning Board of Appeals of the town of Carver willing to look at the facts objectively and listen to the concerns of the residents about the trucks going in and out and the threats to the public health, safety, and welfare from the operation of this trucking terminal?
I want to tell you, Ms. Sheehan, and I've said this to you before, I respect your passion, but don't respect sometimes the words that you use to express your viewpoints. This board does not shirk its duties, nor does it take an approach to avoid making appropriate legal decisions when necessary. This is, as you've pointed out already, a quasi-judicial board. And we take the law and we follow it wherever it may take us. So although we may have personal viewpoints that are in accordance with yours or in sympathy with yours, we must follow the law. It's not necessarily always about what seems right, because the law is not always right. But the law provides us with rules and guidelines by which we must abide. Now, as I understand it, again, your argument here today is really the difference between what we ruled on in 2021 and what you're asking this rule on now in 2024, is that in 2021, it was all about earth removal. Now it's all about operating a trucking terminal. But it seems to me that those two are related, or certainly interrelated. If you're going to be removing sand and gravel, as you alleged to be occurring in 2021, you would have to say that as part and parcel of operating a truck terminal, earth removal is occurring again. So those are my reactions to what I'm hearing from you. Again, I respect your passion and your willingness to come before us again and present a case that you've obviously worked hard on and have prepared. This is just one person's view. I don't take the other ones with me. As you've sat through enough of our hearings now to know that we have very independent thinkers on this board. But I believe that we're talking about the same issue, whether you say it's a truck terminal, whether it's earth removal, it's all hooked up together. And so the question then becomes, why isn't this, for me anyway, it becomes, why isn't this issue preclusion? Why isn't this collateral stop? Why wasn't this mentioned in 2021? And here we are, already an hour into this, or very nearly, and we're talking about primarily, in my view, the same basic allegations. We can say there's differences here and there, and you've outlined at least in your mind the major one. This is the same stuff. It's the same stuff. So I'm going to leave you with an op... Ladies and gentlemen, please. I'm going to leave you with another opportunity to comment on what I just had to say, and then I'm going to ask any representative of Reed or A.D. Makepeace to make comment if they wish, and then on to the public. Ms. Sheehan?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. I would simply request that you enforce the Carver zoning bylaw use regulation table 2200 and require a special permit and a site plan review for the A.D. Makepeace Reed Custom Soils business operations that are entirely separate from the earth removal operations and consist of the operation of a trucking terminal under the zoning bylaw, that you enforce Section 3100, which is site plan review, that you enforce Section 4300, which is water resource protection, and specifically calls out the operation of trucking terminals and requires the protection of the sole source aquifer, and that you require a special permit under Section 5300. Those sections of the bylaw were never mentioned in the 2021 proceeding. This is a completely separate and distinct request, and even if it wasn't, the violations are continuing. The grounds for your rejection of that appeal at that time included many ministerial and, in my view, unsubstantiated claims that we hadn't paid our fee, which was, in my view, totally concocted, but ended up being that you felt that was a request for enforcement of the earth removal bylaw under the jurisdiction of the Earth Removal Committee. And that was the basis for the court's decision. This is operation of a trucking terminal. Makepeace can mine these sites and take the sand away directly to other places, which is oftentimes, in fact, what they do and the other sand and gravel companies that are running this town do all the time. This is a separate and distinct business. You can look at their website. They talk about how they have three locations, and they have a business running Reed Custom Soils. They don't say we're running earth removal operations at 46 Federal Road. So if you want to rest on collateral stop and the issue preclusion, I do not believe there's any legal basis for you to do so.
Have you brought these concerns of yours to the planning board, Ms. Sheehan?
I just want to remark that this is not about my passion. It's not my concerns. These are the concerns of the 200,000 people who drink out of the sole source aquifer. These are the concerns of many of Save the Pine Barrens residents, including people who live next to this site and the many other sites where this mining is going on and where the trucking happens.
Okay. Again, I posed my question. Have you been brought, have you brought your concerns about this to the planning board yet? Yes or no?
I have copied these papers to the planning board, and they are well aware of it, and they could have taken action.
Have you asked for a hearing?
What would be the basis for a hearing? We're talking about violation of a zoning bylaw.
Okay.
I'm not... There is no procedure for a third party to apply to the planning board for a site plan review and a special permit for A.D. Makepeace. A.D. Makepeace has to do that.
I think I'm hearing you say that you have not requested an audience, if you will, before the planning board.
What would be the point of requesting an audience? In my mind, I know I'm not supposed to ask you questions, but I can't think of anything that would result from that.
Well, the planning board does have people come before it from time to time to sort of get a, dip your toe in the water, understanding of whether they might be favorable or unfavorable, might need more detail to their plan. So this is something that the planning board does apparently from time to time consider. It's hard for me to think that they would slam the door in your face.
I am using the Zoning Enabling Act that sets out a very specific process for seeking enforcement of the bylaw. And that's not to go to the planning board. It's to go to the building inspector. And then if he declines to take action, which is what happened in this case, the route that is provided by the law is to come in front... is to come in front of the zoning board of appeals and attempt to get a fair hearing.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Mello.
I would like—because it seems to be very distinctly one side, the other side. I would like to get a legal opinion from town council as to whether or not we have jurisdiction.
Premature. Let's go to Mr—anybody here representing AD Makepeace and/or Reed Custom Soils, hello, say. If you could approach the microphone, identify yourself in your professional address. Both of you.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, my name—excuse me, my name is Mike Crossen. I'm counsel to Reed Custom Soils and AD Makepeace Company.
You're going to have to bring that microphone very closely.
I apologize.
Because you're a horse tonight. And the gentleman sitting next to you is—
Sorry, Mike McVay, I work for AD Makepeace, counsel.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, I will be very brief. I am—I think you're absolutely right that one should address the procedural issues before getting to the substance of the matter. You don't need to hear that from me, I understand that. But I'm frankly grateful that you didn't allow them to go on to what they consider to be substantive issues before addressing the jurisdictional issues. Candidly, I think you're absolutely right on collateral estoppel and issue preclusion. I would also note that I have seen nothing to suggest to me that Save the Pine Barrens has standing as an aggrieved party here or an aggrieved person, excuse me. That issue wasn't addressed already, but I have seen nothing to suggest that they have it, either by themselves or through association. Beyond that, unless for some reason you'd like me to address the substance of this matter, which I think I should not, or is probably not appropriate at this point, I will rest on that. I believe that your analysis was absolutely right, to be candid.
The gentleman next to you have anything to say?
I'd like to share my opinions, but I'm going to not. So, thank you.
Well, feel free, now is the time. Make them positive, though. You're good?
Yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, would you like to ask any questions or have discussion with either one of these gentlemen? I don't hear any, so you may withdraw. Thank you for your input.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen.
If you have something to say later on, raise your hand. Okay?
Understood, thank you.
Now, ladies and gentlemen of the public, this has been a very challenging case on a lot of different levels. And as I said before, sometimes the law doesn't want to take us where we would like to go on a personal basis. But we must follow that law, even in times when we know that the decision could be unpopular. Speaking for myself. So I want to ask if anybody would like to be heard. Again, please keep your comments positive. And do I see any hands? And if someone would like to be heard?
Before that?
Approach the microphone.
Before?
Yes.
Are we talking about the substance, or—
No, we haven't talked about substance.
So we're talking about jurisdiction at this point?
I sense that we will probably stray into remarks that have to do with substance. If we go too far afield, I'll shut that down. But for now, I think you were first—
Isn't this a public hearing on the application for enforcement? Isn't that right?
Come on up to the microphone. Add your name and address would be great. Now, we're in public time.
Yes, we cannot—
You will have an opportunity to speak after, okay? Yes, ma'am.
Do you have some sense of the content of people's speech? Whether it's siege or a substance.
Ms. Sheehan, you've had plenty of opportunity to speak and present your case so far. You've done that eloquently. Now let's let the public have its turn. And then I'll come back to you again for final comments. Okay, ma'am.
Mary Dormer, Plymouth Street.
Thanks for coming tonight, Mary.
No problem. A couple of things I want to point out. Save the Pine Barrens did not file the application. It was filed on behalf of— Oh my God, I just drew a blank. Community Land and Water Coalition, which is a subsidiary of Save the Pine Barrens. But I do want to point out that you guys are bringing up this case of 2021 and people coming before you. This is about what's happening now in Carver. And I'm sure that you're all aware that the inspector general is looking into all of the earth removal. So I don't even think that we have to touch on that. But what is—what I'm hearing is that, right from the get-go, our concerns as residents on what is going on in Reed Custom Soils is discounted. That we have no say, which is what happens when we go to the ERC meetings. Which, by the way, just like for the last 10 years, AD Makepeace has been building these buildings for the Reed Custom Soils, they've been building the box that they are pulling the dirt out for. So it's the same—it's the same— it's the same plans, it's the same engineer, and it's the same amount of time. Something has to be done. Your job is to protect the residents. What's happening with AD Makepeace pulling all the sand out, especially with the new regulations coming down from the EPA on how PFAS is going to affect the lower standards for PFAS, this is going to be a huge problem for our sole source aquifer. And there are no other—there's no other source of water for any of us here in Carver. Because, you know, the North Carver Water District is defunct, and Meadowboro's pumping poison water into everybody's home. That's on it. You guys have a duty to us, not AD Makepeace. And I'm a little bit disturbed, Mr. Gray, with your treatment of Ms. Sheehan. From the get-go, it seemed like you didn't want her to be here. And I really find offense to that, because she's here representing us, when no one else in this town has stood up and said, "Let the residents come first." AD Makepeace gets a pass every single time. And I understand, they make a lot of donations, they do a lot of good things. But they don't live in Carver. What they're doing is raping Carver of our natural resources.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Dormer. Next? Yes, sir. Come right up. Your name and address.
My name is Larry Lewis, and I'm a resident of Carver Village.
Hello, Larry, thanks for coming.
Oh, thank you for having me here. My home—my wife and I home—our home faces onto the woods. And beyond the woods is this enormous pit that Makepeace has carved out of the earth. I've calculated, by looking at the Makepeace permit maps, is—the area was the equivalent of about 18 football fields in area and 90 feet deep. Beginning last Monday, they started clearcutting closer and closer to Cranberry Village. And now I estimate it's a little over 200 feet, maybe 250, something like that, from Cranberry Village, which means that all the noise and the dust and the damage to the aquifer is going to be felt in Cranberry Village. Cranberry Village, as you probably know, is a group of people who live there. We're all 55 and over, I'm 86.
No, you're not. You're not yet.
And not only the destruction of the forest and the wildlife, which is now actually retreating into Cranberry Village, I've seen—what do they call it, meerkats? And large mammals of all kinds are coming into Cranberry Village that didn't do that before, because they're being washed out of the woods there. One of the things I want to address is what it's like now to travel along Federal Road. Federal Road, as you know, is a curvy country road, a little two-lane road. And now, when I travel from Cranberry Village to Wareham, for example, probably five or eight trucks I pass, you know, coming back to get more sand. And I might be in back of a truck, and there might be a truck in back of me. Now, it's happened several times in wet weather. I don't know if you're how familiar you are with that road, but there's certain curves that gather water in wet weather. And either you go through this thing and a huge amount of water, or you try and avoid it by going a little bit to the left. One of the things that's happened to me, and I've heard other people, is that these trucks, when there's water, huge torrents of water will splash the cars that these trucks are coming towards. And on a curve—you know what it's like being on a curve and being blind, not being able to see. It's very scary.
So you see a public safety issue?
I see definitely a public safety issue there. So I wanted to comment on the public safety issue, the impact on life in Cranberry Village, which is becoming considerable. And you've heard testimony about the aquifers and silica dust and all these things. So that's what I'd like to say. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Well, you've said it very eloquently. And we appreciate the time that you spent tonight appearing and speaking to us. We take all of your opinions to heart, and we will consider them in due course.
Okay, thank you so much for hearing me.
You bet. Who else would like to be heard? Yes, ma'am? Yes? Name and address, please.
Very quick and to the point.
Oh, that's okay.
My name is Judith Pratt, and I live on 284 Meadow.
Thank you for being here tonight, Judith.
Thank you. We have had a lot of issues going on in this town with a lot of things. I'm trying to keep a positive spin and stay focused, because we don't want to get off on other things. But the whole town of Carver is a water resource protection district. And with our well water and everything, and with all the digging, and people that are are not working within the limits of a permit or without a permit, and they're pushing the sand. And as they keep pushing the sand, it changes the flow of the water and the direction of the water. It can pick up contaminants. People's wells have dried up in certain parts. Some people have said that their wells were getting contaminated from other things as the water travels. But I'm concerned about that, because—I don't know about anybody else, but I don't think I could afford water being piped in from another town. A lot of people like Carver because we have well water, and we want to protect our water. That's—because my opinion. And a lot of concerns with a lot of people. And we look to these boards in the town of Carver to help us and protect our town. And our town is just—well, I won't continue on that, because we could be here for a long time. And you all seem concerned about the signs. And that's always been a thing with Carver, I'm a Carverite. And I just wish that more attention were paid to the bylaws and things. And not just this board, but every board. If they were just be as—I don't know what the word is. If they would just be into the bylaws like they are the signs, I think we'd be a lot further down the road in a good place. And that's all I want to say.
And thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me be heard.
You bet. Who else? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Linda Jacobs, and I live in Cranberry Village.
And thanks for coming tonight, Linda.
Oh, thank you. Well, I felt I had to come, because I'm new to all this issue. I really didn't even—I didn't know about sand mining until about—I don't know, six or eight weeks ago. But I'm well aware—always been well aware of the trucks on Tahanet on Federal Road. I've lived in Cranberry Village now for three years. And there's—the truck traffic on that road is stressful and at times dangerous for—Larry outlined some of the hazards really well. It's a very curvy road. The trucks often go very fast. And in wet weather, there's a large area on a turn that gets very deep. And I've had my window splashed, I'm unable to see. Now that I know about the sand mining operation, I am very concerned about the silica dust. And I see sand on the road, which I'm aware of. It contains that dust. The dust is blowing into our community. And I've learned that it's an environmental justice community, that we're all old people, and we deserve some extra amount of protection, because we are—our immune systems and health systems are already compromised due to our age. And it's just extremely upsetting to me that the town seems to, as the woman before me said, favor big business over human beings. And you are right, Mr. Chair, in saying that the sand mining operation and the trucking operation are connected. And so when I hear the machinery—I can hear it, I live a good distance away from the sand pit, but I can hear it with my windows closed. When I hear that and I see the trucks, I—it's stressful to me, because I know that my community is being invaded by toxins and that my town representatives are not taking my life and the lives of my neighbors into consideration, and that a huge, beautiful forest is being destroyed without any concern on the part of the people who support big business, and that creatures who live there are losing their homes. And that's what all occurs to me when I hear the noise and see the sand and the dust flying around. It's incredibly stressful. And I have to say—I know I'm supposed to be positive, but, Mr. Chairman, you seem to me to be very patronizing towards us. And I don't appreciate it, nor did I appreciate your attack on an attorney who's representing the interests of the people.
Well, let's stop there for a minute.
I will.
Okay. There is nothing patronizing about questioning an attorney closely about her case, or his.
I said patronizing to us, the townspeople.
All right, well, it may be patronizing to you, but this is lawyer to lawyer. There's nothing patronizing about it. When we attempt—or when I attempt to tease out an argument from another attorney, we have to ask very direct and specific questions. Now, as a layperson, let me finish—
I'm not talking about that. And you—I also didn't see you listening to some of us. I saw you reading, I saw you just looking up. We are trying to speak to you, and that—I resent that.
Okay. Thank you. Next. Okay. I think you had raised your hand first.
Yeah, that's okay. I'll listen, I'll—Karen Lappin from Main Street again.
Karen, thanks for coming tonight.
No, thank you, I appreciate everybody's time. I appreciate all the board's time. As others have said, I do feel like that there's this this twisted vine of boards listening to each other's concerns, or this should be everybody's concern. There shouldn't be this concern for this board, this concern. It should be everybody's. And when you go back and forth, well, what did this board say? What did that board say? We really shouldn't have to do that. I would assume that you guys keep up with what some of the other boards and board meetings are about. But either way, I just wanted to say this, you know? I don't know if we're trying to determine what's going on down there or not, but I hope that some of yous are going to take the time to just Google it. I just did. The outright state in—that company states that there is scale house and blending facility right there on 46 Federal Road. Like, if you go in, there's a couple of Google reviews you can read where they're saying, "Thank you, Sandy showed us right where the scale house was, and everything went fine, and we'll be back for more of everything we need." So I hope that we're just not going to pretend that these things aren't going on down there, because—they are, and I think most of us know that. So—but thank you for your time. And again, I'm concerned for everything going on in our town. And I wish that I was three or four years ago. I wish I was a long time ago, paid more attention, more people should, and it wouldn't get this crazy like it is in town. So thank you.
Thanks for your input.
The animals do matter.
They do, they're in— I picked up a poor baby beaver today. Had to move it, it got killed on the road.
Yes, ma'am?
Hello?
My name's Amy McCain. Everybody knows me as Amy Mariam.
Hello, Amy.
Hi.
Thanks for coming tonight.
I live in Cranberry Village.
And your address in Cranberry Village?
14 Lincoln Circle.
Okay.
So I'm in the back of the park, the very quiet end of the park, because we're on the back circle. There's one way in and one way out. Unfortunately, they have started clearcutting right across the street from me. There's trees in between, but I can now see clear sky in between these trees. The noise from them clearcutting, I could not have my windows open. It was a beautiful day, but I had to shut my windows and my doors because of the noise. That's only going to get worse with the trucks and the digging, and they're chipping now, which isn't quite as loud, but the trucks are going to be loud. I echo Linda and Larry about the driving down Federal Road. It's a very curvy road, very back road, water. We also have the addition of the Cranberry trucks going down there in October and November. So we've got trucks, 500 trucks of Cranberry bogs, and they're flying down there because they want to get down there and wait and get out. Then we've got the dirt trucks. That road is almost impassable in October and November, and those trucks are driving fast. The other thing is, a couple days ago, right across the street from my house, in my neighbor's driveway, there was a deer, broad daylight, like nine o'clock, 10 o'clock in the morning. And he's looking around, he's munching on the bushes, and then he walked through my backyard and out to another yard. You don't see a deer in the daytime walking through a park. They've just destroyed his home. And that's all I have to say.
Thanks for your input, too. I appreciate it. Thanks for your input. I appreciate it.
Thank you for listening.
Yes, ma'am? Name and address.
Sure. I'm Jen Bogart, and I live at 116 Cranberry Road. I'm a butter to the project, and I actually have a clear view of the entire site. I wasn't totally sure based on the public hearing notice that I got exactly what was going to be discussed tonight, so I didn't come with a binder of information that I've accumulated over the past 13 years of living there, because, as you've said, it's a huge site and there's a lot going on. So from what I've heard tonight and what I believe we're supposed to be talking about with reeds and the activity going, what I could pull up was, you had referenced, I think in 2014, it went to the planning board, and they were going to do something. Okay, so back then, I remember they had told the Makepeace or Reed, when they were proposing this to the planning board, they did say they were going to build, they were going to access the project site by way of an existing gravel road approximately one mile south of the Ocean Spray facility. That road and area has never been built, and as someone else said, there is a sign at 46 Federal Road for the Reed Custom Soil Mixing House. So they didn't build what they were supposed to, but in June of 2016, I went to an A.D. Makepeace quarterly meeting, because again, I've followed through what's going on across the street, because I've just always wanted to know what is happening, what am I looking at? So in June of 2016, at the A.D. Makepeace quarterly meeting, when I asked, what are all these humps and lumps of sand and materials that I was seeing at the far southern edge of the bog across from me, Jim Kane, President and CEO of Makepeace, told me, and I quote, because I kept a lot of notes, this is all I could find on my phone, quote unquote, "We can't do all the mixing," and where they were supposed to do, in the facilities that were supposed to be on the other side of Ocean Spray that weren't supposed to be visible. None of the Reed's custom soil stuff was supposed to be visible from Cranberry Road. But he told me in June of 2016 that they can't do all of their mixing where they were supposed to, so they're keeping and using materials at the southern edge of that bog, and they're still doing that today. So what they were doing eight years ago is still happening now, and it hasn't slowed down. So if that's the crux of what we're talking about, the trucking and the reeds activity, that is still happening where they said it wasn't going to. And again, if I knew what we were going to talk about, I could have brought more, but that's what I could find. So they are doing stuff and keeping materials in a place where they said they wouldn't, and they have been for eight years.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Thank you for that.
Yep.
Appreciate your input as well. Who else would like to be heard? Yes, ma'am? Thanks for being patient. We have a lot of interest in this case tonight. What's your name and address, please?
Joe Bedling, 277 Menno Street.
Good. Thanks for being here tonight.
You're welcome. First of all, I would like to ask, if Reed Custom Soils is indeed operating a business in town, they're supposed to submit a business license within the town. You might want to check to see if one has been submitted, because I know somebody that has a shop in Lakeville, and they have to submit to Lakeville Town Hall a business license to operate. So if they have not got an operating license, something needs to be done. Okay. What the lady in the front row with the tie-dye shirt was saying earlier, yes, I too, my husband too, and other neighbors have felt that numerous boys in this town do not care about the residents. They just throw things under the rug, they don't want to hear it, they look around, they don't want to be bothered with what we are coming in front of them for. I, myself, and my husband have endured and dealt with for over 10 years, not opening our windows, our property and vehicles being covered in sand and silica, the noise, the truck traffic, you name it, we dealt with it. It's done. The sand mine is shut down. This sand mining in town needs to be stopped. We moved to this town because of the ambiance, the atmosphere, the wildlife, and it's all being destroyed by all of these trucks in the sand mining, and God knows what else is going on. I mean, enough is enough. You're supposed to be protecting us. When?
Thanks for your comments. Who else would like to be heard? Have we exhausted the comments that people want to make? I think we're starting to get a little bit repetitive at this point anyway, but the comments have been...
That's because we all feel the same way.
Ma'am, you will speak when you're recognized, okay? That's a simple rule, and it's for the benefit of all of us. Now, I want to ask, and this is out of the ordinary, but I want to ask counsel for A.D. Makepeace and his companion to approach the mic again. Now, we have spent the last half an hour or so, I haven't been watching the clock, but you have heard some very concerned, emotional, and eloquent comments from numerous town residents about what's happening out at map 131 lot 2-4. I want you to address these concerns at this point, and why you believe, if you do, that these are not legitimate concerns. We can talk about the law all we want, right? There are three lawyers in this room, and we can delve into the legal niceties, and some of you can say, well, gee, you know, this is irrelevant, you're not protecting us, whatever. We must all follow the law, as I said before, whether we like it or not, whether our personal opinions might go the other way, but we must follow the law. And we have made many decisions over time, haven't we, where our decisions have not been especially popular? But you've heard some very concerned comments tonight, and as counsel for a business in town which has a heavy footprint, I'd like to hear from you and/or your companion about how you would respond to these.
I'm happy to do that. Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think we are a nation that's governed by laws and the Commonwealth. There's a Commonwealth governed by the laws in the town as well, and I don't think you're suggesting to me that we should look beyond those. I get that. I do think this decision should be rendered on the basis of the law. I have no reason to believe that anyone who came up to speak, any resident of the community who came up to speak to you tonight, said anything that they didn't believe. And I listen to them. I listen to all of them. And I am... Are their comments troubling? Their comments are troubling. They simply aren't the matter before this board. Does it mean that something perhaps ought to be done about Federal Road, trucks apparently speeding on Federal Road, the width of Federal Road? I don't know the answer to that. The truth of it is, every single night on the news, we see problems that people encounter, but you need answers to those, and you can't blame those problems on persons who are conducting themselves lawfully. So yes, I appreciate the comments they made. I respect the comments they made. They simply aren't the matter currently before you folks, respectfully.
And what's the current matter before us?
It is a matter of law. You are absolutely right when you made the statement in the beginning. There is an issue preclusion here, there is a collateral estoppel here. You are absolutely right.
It may be true, as I said before, and as you just acknowledged, that there is a collateral estoppel or issue preclusion, issue that prevents us to getting to the merits of the case, and as you said, we are a nation of laws, and thank goodness for that. But there's something else here, isn't there? A.D. Makepeace and your counsel for this big corporation needs to make an appropriate business decision about what to do here. If we find that we're constrained because of the issues of collateral estoppel and issue preclusion, because of the case that we heard back in 2021 for the very same site with many of the same issues, why are we still talking about this today? Why hasn't A.D. Makepeace, based on a business decision that it's capable of making, met with people in the neighborhood, talked to them about their concerns, and attempted to address them? Why has that not happened?
Mr. Chairman, let me comment on that if I could for a moment. You may recall, but you may not, because you have a lot of these hearings, I get that, that the last time we were here on this exact same issue, there were a lot of people in this room, a lot of people who were employed by the company or engaged in this business, who support their families on the basis of this business.
I recall.
They too have very valid concerns. They benefit from the law being enforced. I fully understand and appreciate and respect the comments made by those persons here tonight. There are just as many persons in this town who are grateful for the activity that goes on, and they don't do that. The other point that I made earlier in this conversation was, there may well be problems to be spoken to. There may well be an issue with respect to the width of Federal Road, the speed of trucks on Federal Road.
The number of trucks.
Maybe even the number of trucks.
The mining.
Excuse me?
The mining, the dust, all the other issues that Ms. Sheehan raised in her initial comments, all those issues are issues that we talked about, virtually all of them anyway, are issues that we talked about three years ago, or almost three years ago now. And here we are again, virtually reinventing the wheel. Now, I'm asking you, and I know you don't have the authority at this point in time, but you represent A.D. Makepeace. They've paid handsomely for your service, as well they should. My suggestion is that you have a serious discussion with the CEO about addressing these issues and what's going on out there in the eyes and minds, noses and ears of these neighbors.
I will do that.
And then I would suggest that a meeting be scheduled with these folks at A.D. Makepeace's convenience and theirs to discuss this, not that you need to hear it all again because you've heard it already, three years ago and again tonight. But if I were A.D. Makepeace, I would be making a business decision here to attempt to ameliorate some of these concerns, not just we hear you, and then a month later, the activity is the same as it was the previous three years. There has to be concrete, a concrete response to these questions. Now, anybody who's been listening to me knows that I have concerns about the extent to which this board can order relief, and I know you agree with that.
I do.
But like I said, there's something else going on here, and that is a neighborhood that is up in arms about what's happening in their neighborhood. And maybe some of it is understated, maybe some of it is overstated, maybe some of it is fair, maybe some of it is unfair. I'm not making any judgments. What I am saying is, you guys need to talk, and you need to talk soon. I'm using this chair as a bully pulpit. You've got to get going on this, and in a meaningful way, because I don't want to have to have this conversation again in two or three years' time, we're back before whoever who's complaining about the same issues because nothing has happened. There has to be an action plan, it seems to me, from a business perspective. You want friendly neighbors, right? You want to be part of the community, right? And you have been for many years, and you've done some nice things as a company. But the activities of the corporation, A.D. Makepeace, and its subsidiary, Reed Custom Soils, there's a negative aspect to some of this, as you listen to the folks in this room, and probably a lot of people who are listening at home. So my suggestion is that you schedule a meeting, talk, all of you, courteously and politely, and we'll see if we can move everybody in a way that will ameliorate, as I said before, some of these concerns. You folks all live in this neighborhood, you are entitled to peace and quiet, you don't want to have dust and rumbling noises, you don't want to have to have issues about safety, public safety. And again, speaking only for myself, I hear all of you, as I heard all of you the last time, but we are constrained by what we are able to do legally, as I've already pointed out. Now, do you have any comments on this?
May I? Just quickly.
Take as long as you need, because what you're about to say now is going to be very important.
No, I'm not going to take up a lot of time for one reason, I don't have a lot of voice left, to be perfectly candid. I respect the comments you just made. I also respect and believe that you're going to rule as a matter of law, but I want to make a personal observation, if I may, as well. While sitting in the back of the room, I looked at some of the old documents in the case back there, including one that identified the first Board of Directors of the Cranberry Growers Association, including Able D. Makepeace. The Makepeace family and the Makepeace Company have been in the Cranberry business in this community for 150 years. They employ many blue collar and ag workers, which is a critically important function served. I also want to make one more point. I get that big, you were characterized as a big company, is a relative term, but the A.D. Makepeace Company isn't really that big a company. That just simply isn't true. It is a company that is working hard and employing many people and doing the best that it can within the law, and does work within the law always. You're right, they talk to me a lot because it is critically important to them that they abide by the law, and they believe that they are stewards of the land that they own. And I have to tell you, at this point in my career and at this age, I work for people I like, respect, and trust. I can't think of any client that I more like, respect, and trust. They are good and honorable people. I am absolutely willing and will have the conversation you've asked me to have with the CEO, and I think he'll do what he can do. Some of these problems, however, are not problems solved by a business trying to run a business, trying to employ folks, but I absolutely will have the conversation. And Jim's a good guy, and he'll try to do what he can as well.
Does your colleague wish to speak?
You know, just to the extent, I think, just to answer your point with...
Identify yourself again.
Mike McVeigh, A.D. Makepeace, 11 years, great company, put me through law school, love the company. I love the company. And I want to talk about this really quick. To answer your question directly, without getting into the merits, we went through a very robust earth removal application process earlier this year. Concom, two meetings, earth removal, two meetings, this building. Most of the folks here had commentary about the earth removal. They all, most of these people spoke at that meeting.
Shh. Mary.
The new chairman, Mr. Hanule, allowed Ms. Sheehan and her group 10 minutes each for Pontiff and ourselves. He gave them wide berth to make a presentation. All the concerns you heard tonight were heard. Is Ms. Bogart still here? She was allowed a long time to speak.
Wait, 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 wait. Let's all stop right now. Shh.
Excuse me?
Listen, listen. Please, it's 20 before 10, and by the way, I haven't had my supper yet. So, look, ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen. and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to run this meeting in a way that's courteous and respectful. You may not always agree with what people say. But give them the opportunity to say it, please, as I've given you all the opportunity to say it. This gentleman has yet to speak. Continue, please.
My only point, Mr. Chair, is that you asked, have these issues been heard by the company? We went to four meetings where, like I said, the chair of each board allowed the public to speak at length and give a lengthy presentation. We had two sit walks by the earth removal, where they met with homeowners in the area.
Okay.
We were not privy to those conversations. That's all I have to offer.
Well, let me say this. It's fine to have conversations, right? We have conversations all the time with people that we may disagree with. But from those conversations, there should come enlightenment. And A.D. Makepeace, as you just pointed out, counsel, has been a part of this community for a long time. It employs a lot of people from this community who have their interests. And I remember all these people that came in in 2021 in this meeting room and discussed this. But back to reporting to the CEO and letting them know what happened here tonight. It's more than just about having a conversation. If this, if some of the, at least some of these concerns are addressed and conditions ameliorated, it'd go a long way towards addressing what we've heard tonight. So I guess I'm suggesting to you, not only a conversation, but an action plan. If A.D. Makepeace has heard all of this before, as you say, counsel, then they're going to be prepared, I would think intellectually, they should be prepared, to offer some sort of plan so that vibration and noise and truck trips and pollution and wildlife concerns and water concerns and all of these other things that have been mentioned tonight can be addressed in a way that has apparently not been addressed to the satisfaction of these folks before. Now, keep in mind also, ladies and gentlemen, in this room and also at home, conversations have to be had again in a respectful way, and compromises often have to be made in order to reach a meeting of the minds. You folks know this. So for anybody to come in and say, "Well, I want this, 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 and this," without listening to the other side, or vice versa, would be counterproductive. So I'm suggesting that you folks meet with the powers that be at Makepeace and figure out what you want to do, if anything. Because I'm not quite sure how this board is going to rule yet. Ms. Mello has already asked me to submit questions to Town Council. And those questions, I'm sure, will be addressed the next time we come back on this case. We already have our next date scheduled, by the way, I'll let you know what that is in a minute. But are you hearing me on this, gentlemen? I know that backs are up all over the place with regard to this kind of situation. I get it. You're not talking to deaf ears. And the questions that I posed initially were legal questions. We do this all the time in court, it may sound hypercritical or disrespectful. It's not. Both of these, counsel, can tell you that. So, on the issue of preclusion and collateral estoppel, these are major issues for us as a board. And I know you want to get past those and talk to me about all the other stuff that's going on. So I'm urging you now, A.D. Makepeace, to figure out what you want to do here. Because I don't know where this case is going. If we take jurisdiction and issue enforcement orders, I don't think you're going to like it. On the other hand, if we decide that collateral estoppel, it's classic collateral estoppel, then Ms. Sheehan is not going to like it, and many of you in this room are not going to like it. So I've not made any decisions yet. But I think what we can do is have discussions civilly that are productive, not just discussions for the sake of having discussions. That's over. That time for that is over. Enough time has passed. We've got to get going on this and address the neighborhood concerns. Counsel, do you have anything further you want to say?
I'm trying to understand what just happened, Mr. Chairman, to be perfectly candid.
Yeah.
I would be shocked if this case were not denied, dismissed, however one wants to put it, on the basis of the procedural issues. Would be shocked.
Well, we take seriously opinions received from Town Council.
And I think that's...
And sometimes, I don't always agree with Town Council. But in this case, Ms. Mello has requested an opinion, and if one member requests a legal opinion from Town Council, we allow that to go forward.
Understood.
Okay?
Yes.
So, your shock aside, we will obtain that opinion and then decide how to respond to it.
Thank you.
It's not a slam dunk for you guys. And it would help a great deal if you could come back with a definitive plan that people begin to think A.D. Makepeace is responding their concerns and taking action.
Mr. Chairman, I think you know I respect you a great deal. I just want to make one point as I leave, and I won't turn this into a debate between you and I. The notion, candidly, that you are telling us that unless we concede to some of the substantive arguments that are being made, you may rule in their favor and take jurisdiction that, candidly, I can't imagine your counsel is going to suggest to you you have, that is problematic.
Yeah, I didn't say that. And I will say this as well for everybody in this room. If you have three lawyers in a room, how many different opinions are you going to get?
Four.
So, may I just ask then, on that basis, so you are not asking me to come back?
Shh. Wait a minute. Please, ladies and gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, I'm really just trying to understand what you're telling us you expect us to do.
I expect you to have a meeting amongst yourselves, and perhaps also with representatives in this room tonight, or others, and talk about some things that A.D. Makepeace can do to ameliorate some of their concerns.
And you want that done before you folks rule on the procedural issues before us, I'm being told.
We're not going to rule tonight because she has asked for a legal opinion. So we're going to stop this train until that legal opinion comes in. Now, you've heard my remarks about collateral estoppel. You've heard my remarks about issue preclusion. We all know what those are as attorneys, right? So you can take those for what they are worth, but by the same token, we've got another attorney, the town attorney, who's going to have to weigh in on this.
I know your town attorney, I respect her a great deal, and I trust...
She's very good.
She's very good.
She's very good.
And I trust that she'll come to the right determination.
Well, I don't want to speak for her. Shh. I don't want to speak for Town Council, but tonight, because it's been requested, we will seek an opinion from Town Council. It would behoove the parties to get together on this before the next meeting date. And to compromise. Nobody is going to win this case. No one's going to come out looking good if there isn't compromise, because one side is going to lose, and they're going to lose badly. Right? It's either yes or no. And then off, everybody goes to court again, which is not productive for at least one side.
Mr. Chairman, we're happy to, I'm happy to have the conversation with the CEO. I will urge him to meet with these folks. I think it a mistake to, for us to try to have a meeting in which we reach compromise in order to get the inappropriate ruling from this board, and I hope that's not what we asked.
This is not a quid pro quo.
Thank you.
What I'm saying to you is, from a business standpoint, you may be protected by the application of technical legal principles, which folks in the audience are struggling with, these principles of issue preclusion and collateral estoppel. And some would say, "Well, you're hiding behind these things to avoid addressing the substance of these concerns." So let's see if we can have a conversation civilly and establish some areas of compromise that will address some or most of these concerns expressed tonight. Because listening to these concerns, it struck me that many of them can be ameliorated by not having to do major things, but little twists here and there that will reduce noise, reduce pollution, reduce vibration, reduce truck traffic, and other things that you may have heard. So I leave it to you and Mr. Kane, and I think it would be helpful for you to attend this meeting with Mr. Kane, face to face, and express to him our wish for you folks to have conversation among yourself, and then with these nice people, and come up with a plan or plans that might be helpful. Whether you win this case or not, you're going to have to live with these people in your backyard.
He don't, he don't care about the background.
Come on, come on, come on. You know, you're getting some very good commentary from me right now, so shh. Counsel?
I'm trying to decide who to respond to, you or the woman who suggested that I didn't go up in the...
No, you don't respond to her. You talk to me. Talk to me.
I've heard your comments, Mr. Chairman. I trust that you folks will make your decision based on the law. I will suggest to Mr. Kane that we have a conversation with these folks. I don't honestly think that we will reach a compromise under the, with the concern... Let me leave that alone. I'm going to suggest to him that we meet with these folks, and I will, I trust that the...
And come up with some suggestions or some actions on the part of the corporation that will address some of these concerns. Like I said, when I began this bully pulpit conversation with you, it's great to have conversations. But what comes out of conversations other than words, right? These people would like to see some action. They're asking us to take action. They're asking us to take action that A.D. Makepeace would not want us to take. So whether we are right on the law or not, from a business standpoint, from the standpoint of being a good neighbor, I think you should be prepared to adjust operations out there to an extent that will ameliorate some of these concerns. I've said that about four times, I'm sorry. It's getting late. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I look forward to seeing you the next time. Could you stay for a little bit? We'll tell you what the next hearing date will be.
Yes.
Okay. You don't have to stay right there. But counsel, would you like anything further?
Thank you.
Okay. And thank you for your comments tonight. Okay. Goodness gracious, this has taken a long time. Mr. Barrington.
Nothing to add.
Mr. Poirier. Ms. Dahl. Ms. Cullum. The loquacious Ms. Mello. Must have something to say.
No, I just would, I need to be better educated on this and what our jurisdiction may or may not be. That's it.
You mean our ability to hear this case?
Yeah.
Okay. So we will seek that legal opinion. I'll reach out to counsel. And our next hearing date is June 12th.
Right.
That's fast. We may need to push it out to the next date, so that we can be sure we get counsel's opinion in time, and have it distributed and absorbed by the board members, and also so that you can do what you need to do on your end with your client and Ms. Sheehan as well. Because I don't mean to leave you out of this. You're well-spoken, and you are passionate about this case, as well you should be. And I think that everybody needs to have a conversation and be willing to compromise before we do something that maybe one of you doesn't really want to have us do. Now, I'll take three more comments, because it's now a couple of minutes before 10, and I think we've heard most of everything that folks wanted us to hear tonight. So I think it's Ms. Dormer who's raising her hand, and counsel, you can withdraw. Thank you for your participation. Ms. Dormer, briefly, I give you one minute.
It's going to be very quick.
Okay.
I just wanted to correct Mr. McVeigh. I am not, well, I am affiliated with Save the Pine Barrens. When I spoke at the ERC meeting, I was speaking on behalf of Carver Concerned Citizens, which is what most of the residents here are a group, are a part of. So I just wanted to clarify that.
All right. Thank you for that. Ma'am, we haven't heard from you tonight. I'm happy to finally have you come up to the microphone. What's your name and your address?
My name is Joanne Suborowski. I am also a resident of Cranberry Village.
And before you go on, Joanne, we have a very nice clerk who has to take everybody's name down. So could you be kind enough to spell your last name?
It's C as in Charlie, I as in Indigo, B as in Bravo, O R O, W S as in Sam, K I. You're welcome. I've done it all my life.
That's a long name to have to spell.
That's okay.
Joanne, what can we hear from you tonight?
I would just like to say, I wasn't planning on speaking tonight. I'm a little worn out from last night where I had to do a speech, and I would just, I don't want to reiterate what everybody else has said, but we people who live in Cranberry Village, it's traumatizing. And I moved to Carver six years ago. I lived in a city all my life. And to have to live under the conditions that we do, it's just really, really unbelievable. I mean, I looked through my kitchen window two weeks ago, I thought I saw a deer, and it ended up being a coyote. And that was quite traumatizing for me, in addition to the fact that those trucks, when you come down and you turn onto Cranberry Road, and then you turn up from Cranberry Road onto Tremont Street, the trucks turning from Tremont onto Cranberry, I realized that the road is very narrow, but the speed that they take that turn on, and I don't understand how some truckers, I guess, are more experienced, and they can take the turn at a much, maybe faster, but they even take it at a better angle, or whatever it is. They don't take up the whole road. So when you're coming this way and the truck is going that way, and you barely have anywhere to move over, or you don't see them until they are right in your face. I mean, it's like, one afternoon, the expression, "Your life flashed before your eyes," it actually did. And I had to stop and slam on my brakes, and I really feel that if I didn't, we would have been, you know, head-on crash. So really, I shouldn't be so premature in speaking like this now. But one of my concerns and my wishes would be if the truckers could be a little more compassionate of how they drive down the street.
How about road redesign in that area?
Well, that would be wonderful. So...
Something to consider.
Uh huh. But I want to thank you very much for your time and your consideration and everyone here. And I can't say how happy I am to hear how the whole meeting turned around. And thank you very much.
Thanks for coming tonight, Joanne. Aside from this nice lady over here who's waving, does anyone else have anything else that they want to say that's different than what we've heard so far? Okay, I think this is the third person that I said I would take three more comments, so you're it. Again, you'll have to reintroduce yourself and your address.
It's Amy McCain, or Amy Miriam, 14 Lincoln Circle. My comment is completely different than what I said before. I just have a legal question as an abutter of the pit that's being created. Weren't we supposed to be notified? Do we have any, do they have any legal responsibility to tell us what they are doing? This new digging thing that they're doing now came as a complete surprise. I had no idea how close they were going to get.
Now, the public hearing notice is posted in three different locations. It's the website, it's the town hall, and in the newspaper. So this hearing had multiple notifications to the public. Now, in terms of their activities, their... Now, in terms of their activities, their specific activities at the site, you wouldn't be given notice of what the corporation was doing necessarily. You would have to observe it, take whatever documentation of that activity that you feel is appropriate, and bring it to the attention of the town or the applicable town boards, which you're doing. Okay? So for tonight, multiple hearing notices. In terms of what A.D. Makepeace and/or Reconstitutables soils is doing, as you heard me say for the last 10 minutes, they better get together, you folks.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, before I take Ms. Sheehan, and I promised her an opportunity to speak again briefly, does anyone else have anything that they would like to say? Because I don't want anybody leaving this room thinking that their voice hasn't been heard. Ms. Sheehan, then. Briefly. Thank you.
What I'm going to address is the concerns that the prior speaker mentioned about not getting notified about the 85-acre sand mining operation that the Earth Removal Committee permitted at the height of COVID and did not give notice to the abutters.
What is the lot number on that, if you know?
It's 59 Federal Road. I'm sorry, I don't have all the lot numbers memorized.
That's not one that's before us tonight.
I'm trying to address what you stated to her, which was that there was -- that if she had a concern about that, she would address the company. They were entitled to get notice. That was permitted during COVID, at the height of COVID, by the Earth Removal Committee. I'm just telling everyone in the room, I want them to know that. It is an 85-acre sand mining operation that's going to go within 200 feet of Cranberry Village and Environmental Justice Community, and it is being used to supply REED. Thank you.
Thank you. And my response to that, as it was at the time, back in 2021, we do not have jurisdiction over earth removal issues. That's a general bylaw. It's not a zoning bylaw. So although Ms. Sheehan raises an important point, that's not a point that we can address. We don't have the jurisdiction. Jurisdiction is just a fancy legal term for the authority or the power to hear a case. That's a general bylaws case, and the Superior Court has already ruled on this. That's why Save the Pine Barrens lost the case that they appealed from us back in 2021. Again, some of you might characterize this as a legal technicality, but again, we must abide by the laws as they are written, as I'm sure both counsel in this room understand. All right. So I think for tonight, we've come to an end of what we can do. We now need to reach out to town council and pose some questions and see what she has to say about this issue of collateral stoppall, issue preclusion, and whether this prevents us from getting to the merits of this case or the substance of this case. In the meantime, I trust that counsel, for A.D. Makepeace, Ms. Sheehan on behalf of Save the Pine Barrens, and you folks, who are not necessarily part of Save the Pine Barrens but have legitimate concerns yourselves, will communicate and hopefully arrive at some action or actions that A.D. Makepeace can take to ameliorate some of these concerns and be a better public citizen. You're frowning.
Who me?
No, the gentleman in back of you.
I'm scholar, you're the top CEO of a doubt.
Okay. I have glasses up here.
I have glasses.
Is the public hearing continuing?
It will be momentarily. And we're going to pick a date, Ms. Dormer, and we invite all of you and your friends and relatives who have an interest in this case to continue to appear and be heard at that time. Counsel? Yes? This better be 30 seconds.
10 seconds. I presume you'll also ask counsel about the issue of standing.
We will. Okay, people, I'm reluctant to set a continued date to our next date, which is only two weeks away, right? I think there's going to take a little bit of time for conversations to occur. So Mr. Barrington, who is the keeper of the calendar in many ways, and Mr. Poirier, who will nix it if it doesn't fit in with his golf schedule, perhaps you folks can suggest some dates.
Well, if -- it's going to be difficult. Obviously, it's not going to work on the 12th. The 26th of June would be the next possible, which gives two more weeks to get to it. Other than that, we're then into July. July 3rd would not work. It's the day before the 4th, but July 10th would be okay. July 17th.
I cannot do the 10th. I cannot do anything during that week.
July 17th.
So we have two dates. June 26th. Is that a date that works for everybody? Ms. Cullum?
Yeah.
Are they going to stop work?
Ms. Doll, hold on a second.
Yeah, that's fine.
You folks?
Yes.
And what about the date of July 17th? Does that work for everybody?
Yes.
Okay. So July 17th is six -- what is that, six weeks away, and the other one is about a month away?
Yeah.
So which would you folks prefer?
Two weeks and six weeks. June 26th is two weeks away, right?
No, it's a month away.
I prefer the 17th.
This is May 29th.
You sound like me, Mark. You sound like me.
Which would you prefer?
The 17th of July.
Ms. Doll, preference?
No preference.
Ms. Mello. Mr. Poirier.
Either one of those dates works for me.
Preference?
Both are okay.
You wanted -- who wanted the 17th? Okay. Counsel, July 17th. Does that work for you?
I will make it work.
Good. Ms. Sheehan, does that work for you? July 17th.
I would actually prefer to have a decision made sooner than then, so we can find out whether you're going to enforce the bylaw or not. So just whatever date you pick, we'll see if it can be here.
Okay. Thank you for that. I think since the impetus seems to be towards the later date, July 17th, this will allow us to obtain during now a summer season where vacations are occurring regularly, this will allow us to obtain the opinion or opinions that we need legally on this case from town council, and it will also importantly allow A.D. Makepeace to have its conversations and also for reach out to neighbors who have expressed concerns tonight, although I think you know very well at this stage what the concerns are. These don't need to be continually mentioned. You folks have to decide what, if anything, you want to do to try to ameliorate concerns, if anything. Okay?
I understand.
So July 17th, this room, 7:00 p.m. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We have listened.
We're near the meeting.
What?
Can you make a motion to adjourn?
No, not yet.
To close? To close out what we were just doing.
We still have a little bit to do. Not on this case, though. Don't know yet.
I have just this case I can stop taking.
To ask people to step outside?
Yeah, no, we're not going to be talking about what we're doing yet at the next meeting. Okay? Thanks for participating tonight.
I just want to say I appreciate that you're walking that fine line with the state of the law and the compassion you have for the people you see and have in your lives. And I do feel that you are doing your best to make something happen, because many people's lives are under pressure. So I thank you for the work.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We hope to see you the next time. We hope to see you the next time, and you're not 86.
I'm in good shape.
All right, we've got a little bit left to do, so although I know we want to visit for a bit, typically this part of the meeting, as everybody knows, is reserved for -- shh. If you want to have conversations, could you step out? Thank you.
I just have a quick question about the dump that's on Federal Road.
The what?
The landfill that's on Federal Road.
Can we talk about that the next time?
Just a real quick concern. With all the sand removed, there was PFAS found over there.
Well, you might want to talk to counsel for A.D. Makepeace while he's here. We're done with this case tonight.
With all the sand that's being removed, I'm really worried about migration of PFAS into everybody's lives.
Okay, talk to counsel about that, because that's a different concern.
It's a huge concern.
It's different than we've heard already, and he needs to hear it too. Counsel, could you listen to this nice lady for a minute before you leave?
Is this service all of them?
Um, no.
No, we're done. Nope, stop. Stop. Talk to him, please. Stop. We're not going to listen to this. Thank you. Would you speak to her outside?
No, I don't want to talk to him.
Okay. Okay. All right. So do we have anything that we want to go over tonight in terms of other business?
So I guess my question is, what do we have on the docket for the next meeting?
We have two new cases.
Just two?
Just two, for now.
Okay.
I don't know what else may be in the queue. I suspect nothing, because we're getting pretty close in the republication deadlines.
Wouldn't be enough time, right?
Right. But we have two cases that are new.
And so at that point, then, the only thing on the 17th would be a continuation of the one --
That's all we have right now.
Right now.
Right now. Poor Patty must be getting writer's cram over there.
She's like, I'm never coming to another meeting.
Ms. Doll, do you have anything further?
No, a lot of questions.
The handsome --
Based on my own, I believe.
The handsome husband, John, awaits.
He does.
And your handsome husband as well awaits, and your son. Ms. Mello, the loquacious Ms. Mello, who was very good tonight, especially on the first case, taking this chair for a while. Nothing further. Mr. Poirier, who is anxiously computing his golf handicap as he sits there.
I am just happy that Fran's happy with the 50 feet. That's all that --
And I have to say that it's always a pleasure to see Mr. Barrington. Not only is he very handsome, but he wears spiffy shirts. Your shirt, though, we've got to turn the stripes around and put a number on your back.
No, no, no.
Plymouth House Correction is just down the road. Introduce you some of my former clients. All right. So Mr. Poirier is giving the sign he wants to go home. So if there's nothing further, I ask for a motion to adjourn from Ms. Cullum.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
And I ask for a motion, a second to that, from Mr. Barrington.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Carver, and good night.